Cheers is on now.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, he did.
Yeah.
Turn it off?
He has.
Hell, when you turn it on, my boots and shoes is on.
Yeah.
Obviously, Mr. Higginson.
Come on, just turn it on. All righty.
You got a boot yard full, don't we?
Hey, if you can explain this to me, I wouldn't be able to talk.
It's made to come to order. We'd like to welcome our guests to the Washita Parish School Board Meeting. Come any time that your schedule will allow. Ms. Mickelson, call roll, please.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Manley.
Here.
Now stand, please, for the pledge to be done by board member Sherry May.
Attention, salute class. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dedication be done by board member Greg Manley.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, just how awesome and loving and merciful and great God you are, Heavenly Father, and we just praise and glorify your name. And Heavenly Father, we just ask for your guidance and wisdom in this board meeting today, and that you will help us to make decisions that's in the best interest of our children and our district, and we'll just give you the praise and the glory for that. Thank you so much for your plan of salvation, and thank you for Jesus carrying that plan to the cross, and just what a great Savior, Jesus. We love, praise, and glorify you. All this we pray in His precious holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Well, we need approval of the minutes of June the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Need a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Need to approve the agenda, but we didn't make a substitute motion to add items two, six, and one. So we need a motion and a second to add these items.
So move. Second.
Again. All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Now, we need a motion and a second to approve the full agenda.
I so moved. We approve the full agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. First, now report Dr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We have not nearly as many to name this month as we did last month, but our new five oh four supervisor, who's been doing the job for us for the past year, year and a half, glad to welcome our, again, five oh four supervisor, Mr. Barry Johnson. Barry, congratulations on that. Principal of Richwood Middle School. You know, Mr. Fremont has come up here, and so we opened up our principal position at Richwood Middle School. Ms. Deborah Brown will be our new principal. There she is. And if you want to see someone with some fire and excitement, just be around her for just a little while. We also had a resignation, I believe it was this past week, where our principal at Calhoun Elementary, she retired, and because of the timing and not having to open it, I'm going to name an interim principal at Calhoun Elementary for this next year. We'll open it about probably April or May of next year for it. She is no stranger to the Calhoun community. She's been there, serving as our curriculum coordinator for many, many years. So our interim principal at Calhoun Elementary will be Ms. Leslie Sumler. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Dr. Coker. Moving down to business. Item number one, do we have any cards, Mr. Manley?
Yes, Mr. Hicks, we have several here.
And a hundred.
Well, I'll call them up once the presentation is made.
Okay. Item number one, a discussion of social and emotional learning in Washita Parish. Dr. Coker, Mr. Pate.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Let me introduce our, and he is zooming in from MD Anderson Hospital. As we are going through this Zoom meeting, Mr. Pate's brother is undergoing some pretty serious surgery, and I know that his mind is with his brother in prayers, as is ours, Curtis. But I'm going to let Curtis talk to you about, last board meeting, we had a little information that was passed out that I think we need clarification on, and an example was given by Ms. Hatton. And Ms. Hatton came up and met with my leadership team for an hour and a half or better. And we were all able to, I believe, the good thing that came out of the meeting was that we were on the same page on where we are in Washita Parish as compared to what some of these other things are going on across this nation. And so, Curtis, if you would, just kind of give us an update on our social-emotional learning. It is not per se a curriculum. It is a program that is being introduced, and I think when you hear Mr. Pate talk, you're going to see that, I have grandkids. These folks up here have grandkids and children in this system. We are not going to do anything to hinder or harm my grandchildren or theirs, or your children or grandchildren. And I think that needs to be said upfront, because we've got some pretty hot topics on the agenda today, and we want to protect our kids. And that's probably, well, it's not probably. I know that's what this community wants also. And so, Curtis, let's talk about social-emotional learning and what we're doing in Washita Parish on that, please, sir.
Okay. Ms. May, board members, and Dr. Coker, and other guests that have been activated in May.
Curtis, hang on just a minute. You're breaking up on us. We actually practiced Zoom yesterday, and there was none of that. So go figure. That's technology, I guess. So I know that you are a fast talker anyway, so go about half, half the pace, and let's see. So let's try it now.
Again, if there's some more cutting out, I'll go to another place, another.
The marvels of technology.
I'm going to mute myself and move to another location.
Now, you're, hey, you're sounding great right now. Keep doing that.
All right. Well, I actually didn't move, but. I can move to another location closer to the router.
So you're fine.
I think, I think we're good. Mr. Miller has made some adjustments here.
All right. Well, I'm going to start again. As I said, I want to actually start by taking you back a couple of months ago in May, during the school board meeting that was held on May the tenth. You voted to approve the RFPs for resources or curriculum. Now, what have been our K-two reading curriculum, the purchase of science materials for our middle school's science curriculum, and thirdly, our Algebra One Geometry and Algebra Two curriculum. And I want to point out that two of the three RFPs that you voted to accept is for curricula that we have already been using, some of it as long as three to four years. The only RFP that was approved for a new curriculum is the one for the K-two reading curriculum by Amplify. After you voted to accept the recommendation from myself to purchase resources that was represented by those three RFPs, that very afternoon, there was a post on the Washita Parents' Choice Louisiana Facebook by Tiffany Will Patton that read as follows, and I'm quoting it, "Zappard of Washita Parish voted to implement the Build Back Better Plan curriculums." Granted, the superintendent of our area approved this curriculum a while back. However, your school board could have and should have rejected the curriculum. They did not. These curriculums include CRT, SEL, and DEI for grades K through twelve. Just remember that from election time in November, that they approved CRT, SEL, DEI, and amidst those include gender ideology, mental health, and teaching your child to hate an oppressor. Yes, they are picking to support your children from the first policy thing I can do.
Curtis, we're, Curtis, excuse me just a minute. We're having trouble again keeping and understanding what you're saying.
All right. Well, anything?
Think you were in that, you had art behind you last time. It was kind of, yeah. You're sounding like a teacher now.
I can no longer give you the board program, but that's something that Mr. Miller did at parties.
Try it now, Curtis, and let's see if we can hear you.
Okay. And I also want to say that the picture, the boardroom has gone off for me. I can't see.
Okay. Okay. He did that to save some bandwidth, so that.
Okay, great.
Yeah. We're not going anywhere.
As a matter of fact, it doesn't matter to me, but if you see me, if you can cut that video along, you can cut that video for the moment. Just do it. All right. So where did you start having problems? Did you just only start?
No, we're good now.
Okay, so. Why did you not hear?
You were, you were reading the.
Facebook.
Facebook post, I think, and you had finished that.
Okay, so everyone heard the Facebook post. So, Dr. Coker, everyone heard the Facebook post? We don't need to read it again?
I think that was, I think everyone heard it. Did everybody hear that okay? Yes, continue from there.
All right. So, I want to put that post by Ms. Patton now to a fact checker test. She stated that the board of Washita Parish voted to implement the Build Back Better Plan curriculum. Now, I went to whitehouse.gov where the press releases are posted, and I actually read the framework of President Biden's Build Back Better Plan. And I want to take just a moment to read the only part of the framework that I was able to find that even deals with education. And again, I'm going to quote from the document from the website, whitehouse.gov. President Biden is calling for a national partnership with states to offer free, high-quality, accessible, and inclusive preschool to all three- and four-year-olds, benefiting five million children and saving the average family thirteen thousand dollars when fully implemented. This historical investment in America's future will prioritize high-need areas and enable communities and families to choose the settings that work best for them, including schools, childcare centers, family childcare providers, Head Start, and other community-based providers. The president's plan will also ensure that all publicly funded preschool is high-quality, with low student-to-teacher ratios, developmentally appropriate curriculum, and supportive classroom environments that are inclusive for all students. That's all I found on the subject of education, and I didn't read anything about any specific curriculum, including CRT, SEL, and DEI that is being promoted as part of his Build Back Better Plan. As a matter of fact, you probably only heard me mention that this deals with preschool. Are you there, Dr. Coker?
We're here.
Okay. I went blank. That only deals with preschool, and board, you did not vote in May to adopt or to approve an RFP that had anything to do with pre-k. Now, back to the Facebook quote to address another bit of misinformation. This statement was made in the post. These curriculums include CRT, SEL, and DEI for grades K through twelve. Now, I want to take each of these acronyms, and I want to explain what they stand for in case someone there might not know. CRT stands for Critical Race Theory. SEL stands for Social Emotional Learning, and DEI stands for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I know of no curriculum, whether it be a curriculum that we've used for several years or the new K-two reading curriculum that incorporates CRT. And I also want to state at this time that there has been no SEL curriculum officially adopted for use in the Washita Parish schools. I know of none of the three RFPs or that you voted to accept in May that will provide teachers resources or curriculum that addresses gender ideology or that will teach our students that based on their race, they will be labeled as being oppressed or an oppressor. That's a pretty strong accusation to make unless you want to provide some specific examples from the curriculum that those three RFPs you voted for include those evidences of CRT and SEL. Now, I'm going to address SEL. And in doing so, I want to take you back once more to a previous board meeting held on June the fourteenth. And during that meeting, Ms. Hatton passed out a document, and she said, and I quote, "What you have in front of you right now is a piece of the second-grade Amplify curriculum." And then after she read much of that document to you, she also read to you scripture from the Bible that's found in Galatians five nineteen. Now, I have provided you with that very same document that she read to you so that we can perform yet another fact checker test. I want you to find it, board members, and hold on to it. And I'm going to refer back to that in just a moment. Dr. Coker, I wanted to ask, are they looking now at that document?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Now, I used this analogy last week in a meeting with Ms. Hatton. General Motors makes Chevrolet, GMC, Buick, and Cadillac. So if you want to purchase a vehicle made by General Motors, you have some choices. Using that analogy, Amplify is a company that develops and sells curriculum. Amplify has math curriculum, they have science curriculum, and they have literacy curriculum. There's more than one choice for a reading curriculum. Now's a good time to let all of you know what we have actually adopted for our K-two literacy curriculum. If you will look at the very top left corner of the document that I just pointed out that. If you will look at the very top left corner, you will see the heading that reads, "Social and Emotional Learning Quest Guide." Now, let me direct you to the top right corner where you'll see a colorful graphic and the heading that reads Amplify Reading. We have not, let me repeat this so no one misses this today, we have not adopted Amplify Reading for our K-two literacy program. So it's time for another fact checker. When Ms. Hatton passed out during the meeting on June the fourteenth, the document that you have in front of you right now, and then stated, and I quote, "What you have in front of you right now is a piece of the second-grade Amplify curriculum," that is not true. The document she was referencing on June the fourteenth, and the one that you have in front of you right now is not, let me repeat that again, it is not part of our newly adopted literacy curriculum from Amplify. We have not purchased this resource, and this is not a resource that our K-two teachers will be using as part of the newly adopted K-two literacy curriculum. So, you may be wondering at this time, well, just exactly what did we adopt? Well, I'm going to be glad to answer that question. Our K-two literacy program that will be implemented during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is called CKLA by Amplify. CKLA stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts. CKLA, Core Knowledge Language Arts. We have adopted a curriculum that includes a very strong foundation in phonics, and it's based on the latest research that involves the science of reading, and which, to my knowledge, does not include CRT. And this Social Emotional Learning Quest that you're holding in your hand right now is not included either. Now, let me direct your attention to two more documents that I provided for you today. And you should have available to you a document that's entitled Amplify CKLA Fact Sheet. Hopefully, you've had time to read it, but I'm actually going to read it out loud so that those that are in attendance today and those listening today will hear the content of the document. I'm reading verbatim from Amplify CKLA Fact Sheet. Core Knowledge Language Arts CKLA mission. Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts is a pre-K through five English language arts curriculum that is uniquely designed to help students of all backgrounds become competent readers and build a shared cultural understanding of the U.S. and the world. Authored by the Core Knowledge Foundation and based on well-established research about how children best learn to read or the science of reading, CKLA combines explicit fundamental skills, instruction, meaningful content knowledge, and it supports all students in learning to read successfully. Grounded in the science of reading, authored by well-known educator and University of Virginia Professor Amy Hurst, and built on the science of reading, CKLA brings together systematic, explicit phonics instruction with knowledge of history and science. Content knowledge is essential to reading comprehension, as well as establishing a shared base of knowledge among students about the American experience and world history. CKLA is, number one, focused on foundational skills such as fine English fluency, oral language development through read-alouds and interaction, and comprehension in the context of background knowledge. CKLA, secondly, is adopted in all fifty states across the country and used by more than one million students in communities of all political persuasions. CKLA, thirdly, is top-ranked by Ed Reports, an independent curriculum review nonprofit which rates ELA programs on three gateways, text, quality, building, knowledge, and usability. Diverse, not divisive. CKLA is diverse, but not divisive. It presents historical content in a straightforward, factual, and unbiased manner to enhance students' reading skills and critical thinking capability. Historical and scientific facts are presented in a manner that allows and encourages students to form their own opinions and think for themselves. The program, one, includes diverse representation that captures the breadth of the American experience as well as highlighting our common humanity and the hopes and ideas we share in common.
Clint, did we lose him?
Okay, I'm back. It just totally went off. Last paragraph. The program teaches key moments in U.S. and world history such as colonial America, the American Revolution, the U.S. Civil War, the Civil Rights Movement, ancient Greek civilizations, and early Asian civilizations, and the Renaissance. CKLA does not teach anything resembling Critical Race Theory. Amplify is a publisher of high-quality K-toe curriculum and assessments. Amplify is focused first and foremost on providing educators with programs that are based on the best research, age-appropriate, and designed to help all students engage in rigorous learning. embedded in our mission statement and all of our programs is a commitment to teaching students to think for themselves. We support educators in teaching students how to think and not what to think. Now, board members, I'd like to direct your attention to a second document. First of all, please notice the date of the one that is attached to the one I just read to you. If you'll turn to the second page, notice the date at the top left corner, March twenty twenty-two. And I want to say at this time that some of you who are on the board have actually been a colleague of mine at one time or another, and others of you I've known for several years. So with that said, I would never knowingly put you, as board members, nor Dr. Coker, or myself for that matter, in a position to defend something that we have adopted if I thought it to be controversial, developmentally inappropriate for our students. As your curriculum director, I do stay abreast of agendas that can be promoted in curricula. I watch TV, I listen to the radio, and I know that there are elements of curriculum that is controversial. So to protect you, or let me say to protect us, because we're all in this together, including parents and grandparents, I reached out to the company with some very specific questions that I wanted answered about the curriculum before we adopted the curriculum. You will notice that the letter in front of you is dated March twenty-twenty-two. Let me remind you that you voted to approve the RFP to purchase our K two reading literacy curriculum CKLA in May of twenty-twenty-two. That's almost two months after I received this letter. Had I found out that the curriculum that was being considered for adoption wasn't appropriate, we would have gone back through the process to find another. So again, I'm going to read this shorter letter so that others here today and those listening can hear the contents of this letter. But before I do, I want you to listen to how many times you hear CKLA reference in this letter and not Amplify Reading. Because CKLA is actually the K two literacy curriculum that we adopted. March twenty-twenty-two, to whom it may concern, and that would have been me because I'm the one that wrote the company and asked specific questions. "I am the CEO of Amplify, a K twelve education publishing company with a twenty-year history of offering high-quality instructional programs in English language arts, science, and mathematics for schools across the country." Amplify's Core Knowledge Language Arts CKLA program does not contain critical race theory, CRT, content. CKLA was authored by University of Virginia professor E. Hertz to build a shared cultural understanding among American children. Hertz has been a proponent of an education that focuses on common ideas and founding principles. As part of teaching children the background knowledge necessary to become strong readers, CKLA provides historically accurate and wide-ranging perspectives that reflect the diversity of the American experience. CKLA is designed to support students in learning to think deeply, creatively, and for themselves, words that are inscribed in our mission statement. We believe in teaching kids how to think, not what to think, and we are proud that CKLA alongside our full portfolio of programs has been embraced by states and school districts representing many geographies and viewpoints due to the high quality of the program. Educators using Amplify programs are also able to select and adjust content, and Amplify is happy to partner with districts and schools to think through how to customize programs for their specific contexts. We are honored to provide Amplify CKLA to your students and teachers. Sincerely, Larry Berger, Chief Executive Officer, Amplify. Now, I presented this letter, the same ones that I just read to you. I presented these letters to Ms. Hatton last week in a meeting, and she responded with, and I quote again, "You were probably lied to." Well, to that I say maybe so and maybe not. I have no reason to think that I've been lied to at this point. But I know one thing. I made a good faith effort to avoid any problems when I made the request to the company to which this letter is addressing. And if I've been lied to, I will be sure to find evidence of that before I accuse the CEO of the company as being a liar. However, let's say that there might be something in the curriculum that we as educators in Washita Parish might not wish to use. Let me draw your attention once again back to the last paragraph of that letter. It reads, "Educators using Amplify programs are also able to select and adjust content, and Amplify is happy to partner with districts and schools to think through how to customize programs for their specific contexts." I will tell you personally, I know that this company offers what's called workarounds for some lessons if we feel that we do not want to use some part of the content and if we feel we need to work around a lesson. So, in closing, and I know some of you are glad to hear that, in closing, let me say that everybody has an agenda. Agendas come a dime a dozen. You can hear them from A to Z, conservative, liberal, true, and false. My agenda, as your curriculum director, is to assist our teachers in selecting high-quality curriculum to establish our goals in Washita Parish. Those goals are different for different subjects and for different grades and for different ages of our students. My goal for a literacy curriculum for our K two students is a rich curriculum, including a strong foundation in phonics, while incorporating the components research is now showing, known as the science of reading, that introduces our teachers to the most effective ways to teach our students to learn to read so that one day they can read to learn. Thank you, board members, Dr. Coker, and guests for your time and patience with me today as I presented facts in order to clear up some misinformation surrounding our K two literacy program.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. We'll turn it back over to you, Joe.
Okay. Mr. Mann, do we have any letters from our guests to address item number one?
I'll call them up individually, but I would like to ask Dr. Coker, if he will, would you mind keeping Curtis online for us? Any kind of rebuttals that we might need as these spokespeople come up and visit on their topic area?
Mr. Pate had actually asked if he could stay on during the course of this, so yes, he's there with us.
Of course, as a board member, I appreciate the updated information. I think it's very valuable and sharing that with us. It kind of educates us, enlightens us on where we're at on our curriculum. We appreciate the work that you've done, okay? Thanks a bunch.
Mr. President, I also would like to address Mr. Pate.
Okay, sure.
I think he's offline.
He's listening, he's hearing.
Mr. Pate, can you? This is Reverend McCoy. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I'm concerned that the post that Mrs. Hatton made on her website, it contains some language that's of concern to me. Because if I'm not incorrect, I believe that was some political overtones in that letter. And you made a statement, "Everybody has an agenda." And sometimes, in leading, you can mislead. And I've always said, it's also in the Bible, that when the blind lead the blind, both fall in the ditch. I'd like to hear that statement relative to come election time. Remember, come election time. Because if that statement was in there, that may be a political agenda. And I think that if it's educational, then I think we need to separate education from politics. I don't think the two should be even entertained in the same conversation. Because if I'm concerned about kids and their education and whether or not they're going to receive an education that is not tainted, then I think that ought to be the subject and it ought to be the end. But to use language that simply says that if they did this, then remember them election time. And sometimes perception is ninety-nine percent. And if I can cause someone to believe and perceive that my actions are pure, even when they're not, then I may have achieved my agenda. And people do not deserve to be deceived in receiving something. So somebody's lying. Either the person who is the CEO of Amplify, who has a lot to lose, their credibility, their business, and so that's their problem. They have to defend themselves however they choose to, whether it's legally or however. Because libel and slander can get a lot of folk in trouble. But at the same time, I need to know beyond the, as a school board member, because I voted for the curriculum. And I know, I like to know that the people that I depend on are credible, and I know that you are, I believe that you are a credible person. I've known you for a plethora of years. So I want to make sure that as we dwell further with this company, because that company needs to see the information that went on the website. And what they do with it is their business. And if I did not do something that I'm accused of doing, then that means that I've got to defend myself and my credibility. And so all of us can end up in court. Because I certainly plan, as an elected official, I still have rights. We have rights. And I think it's important, no, excuse me, I think it's beyond important for my credibility when it's being challenged. If I made a mistake, then I don't mind admitting my mistake. But can I just share this with you? Because the word mistake can be relative. Because what appears to be to some person as being an error, wrong, or mistake could very well, to me, not be one. We're going to have political differences. But at some point in time, we ought to come together and agree for the sake of the children.
Exactly.
For the sake of the children. If you're trying to give me a black eye, and no pun intended, my mother and father did that, and she just deceased a few days ago. If that's the case, then I can live with that. Be honest with me and say, hey, man, I just want to get you out of your seat, so I'm going to use any tactic I possibly can to get you out of your seat. But if I have not intentionally done anything wrong, deceptive, or incorrect, and I don't, you know, I can use the Bible because I use it all the time as a pastor. But if I mislead the people that God has placed under my auspices, my earthly realm is not the only one that I have got to answer to. And I know I'm on my stage right now, but let me get off my stage. As Mr. Pate said, I know some of y'all would be glad to hear me say, that's going to be the last thing. But I think those who are in attendance and those of you who are here because you believe that you are here for the right reason, I think it's important for you to examine as well the information. Rather than, because anybody could be telling a lie. It doesn't have to be the person from Amplify, it could be anybody. And I think that as we continue to move forward, we will get to the root of this. Quite frankly, you know, I have a degree or two or three too. And I don't, I don't even know what critical race theory is. God knows I don't. I couldn't care less about that. I'm like the people from Amplify and Mr. Pate. We teach kids to read so they can read. We teach them to learn to read so they can learn to read to be able to become productive citizens. And I think I've said enough. I think enough has already been said. I apologize, Mr. Board President. I appreciate you for allowing me the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chase, let me just say one thing if I could. I want y'all to make sure you understand that Mr. Pate is not the sole person who selects a curriculum in the Washita Parish school system. This is a vetted process. We have representatives from every, teacher representatives from every elementary school that we have. They come in, they go through the various vendors that are out there that are putting their curriculums out there, and then our teachers go through it. And when I tell you they go through it, I mean, they go through it. They take it back to their school. They share it with their other teachers at their schools. Well, that's what they're supposed to be doing if they have been elected to be part of that selection process. And then they have a vote. They vote on which curriculum they feel like best is going to support the needs of the students in the Washita Parish school system. So as Curtis is director over our curriculum and instruction, and this is with every curriculum that we do. I see some of my curriculum coordinators that are in the audience today, and y'all know exactly what I'm talking about because you deal with it on a daily basis. And so as they go through the process, and it is a process, it doesn't happen overnight. There's a lot of thought, there's a lot of energy, there's a lot of work that pours into what we bring back and we bring to the board to go into our students' lessons. And so just want to make sure that you're clear that Mr. Pate doesn't select the curriculum. It goes through an entire district process of selection. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Coker. Any more discussion? Mr. Mann, do we have a?
Yes, our first person to want to speak before the board is Mr. D.L. Boyce. Mr. Boyce, if you'll keep your comments relative to agenda item number one, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Just real briefly. Bottom line, definitely against SEL, and I'll defer the rest of my time to Ms. Hatton.
Okay. Ms. Tiffany Hatton? Pardon me? You have three minutes for your presentation for the board relative to this particular subject item. No, you have three minutes for your time. You can't, we don't add up participants' time, okay? Each person has three minutes before the board, so Mr. Boyce can't give you his time.
Thank you.
Okay? It can only be three minutes per participant. That's the new guidelines that we're operating under. So Mr. Boyce, if you've got two minutes and forty-six seconds, if you'd like to use that.
Well, nothing I can direct when we address the SEL. I did have some comments about some things that Mr. Pate said.
Yes, if you want to step to the podium, yes, right.
I know everyone gets opinions and dime a dozen, but those dimes add up to the populace of Washita Parish and our pockets. Also too, since this came up under the SEL conversation, I don't think it's really good that our populace can feel intimidated if we have a difference of opinion or even threatened. And again, since it came up under the SEL, I think we should keep politics out of education. But I don't know of any other way to elect a board or have a group of people come together to help direct our school systems. So I almost think it's impossible to bring politics out of education. Because within, in the origins of our education system, it was the church, it was community, and that incorporated the community as itself. A couple of trigger words that I did hear that concerned me in what Mr. Pate said, and it brought me to that old saying, "I'm from the government, I'm here to help you." And that's always scared me. And but the words division, cultural, they've almost become trigger words for SEL, and that's what I hear. So I guess the proof is going to be in the pudding after parents hear the things possibly that children say and what comes home. So we'll know. I know in some other parishes, I know in some other parishes, I have personal experience of parents pulling their children out of the school system because of some, some of the things that have been told to the children. And I know that these parents can't afford to do it. And, uh, children are our greatest asset. We all know that. That's right. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Ms. Tiffany Hatton?
Afternoon, board members. Um, no definition for social emotional learning has been given on your behalf either by yourselves or Mr. Page. So social emotional learning, its intent was to be used for mental health awareness through the pandemic. So we can't make our own definition up for social emotional learning and to make it sound less offensive or opposite of what its intent is. And its intent is an umbrella. CRT, comprehensive sex education, welcoming classroom environments, and other things are embedded into these programs, vendors, and everything that comes into the curriculum. So although it's not a curriculum, it is part of the programs, apps, and everything embedded, the data mining within it. So just keep that in mind. I'm going to quote Ms. Dr. Carol Haynes out of Texas, who I've sent you links about, because she has devoted her career to social emotional learning and exposing what it truly is. SEL first gained a foothold in federal law with Clinton's Goals 2000, designed to change student attitudes, values, and beliefs. States had to adopt the statute's national educational goals to get federal funding through the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. The ESEA's reauthorization of the Goals 2000 mandated state curriculum standards and standardized tests circumventing local control. This led to more federalized control with the No Child Left Behind, Race to the Top, Common Core, and Every Student Succeeds Act. SEL was key in all of these. So this is not new. You've been allowing this for a long time, 50 years or so, okay? The Every Student Succeeds Act, ESEA, which replaced No Child Left Behind, provides many opportunities for SEL funding through titles 1, 2, 4, 6, and 8. That's a lot of money coming in for this. The National Assessment of Educational Progress, NATE, is now testing for social emotional characteristics of violation of federal law and the Fourth Amendment right to privacy. ESEA actually cemented federal control. Not only did ESEA codify Common Core, it changed the primary purpose of education from academic to social and emotional learning. Our classrooms are no longer academic. They're revolved around social and emotional learning. The federal government is pushing social emotional learning and critical race theory into public schools through the American Rescue Plan 2021. To receive federal grants, the school is required to spend at least 20% on SEL and free anti-racist therapy for white educators to get grants, as well as 5% of the 20% to be used for instruction to include SEL. Social and emotional learning is psychological manipulation. And this is per Dr. Haynes. Psychological manipulation is found in the self-awareness core competency, awareness of beliefs, mindsets, and biases, and how they influence one's behavior. Opting one's child out of SEL assignments sounds simple enough. In reality, it's virtually impossible. The Education Department's handbook roadmap to reopening safely and meeting all students.
Your time's up, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Hatton. Appreciate your time.
I would like to finish, please.
No, ma'am, your time's up.
We had 30 minutes of anti-Tiffany.
Ms. Hatton, your time is up.
Mr. Hicks, could I, could I make a motion? I'm kind of interested in what she's saying. And to allow her, say, 40 seconds, could we, just a little bit more? So I need a second on that.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, go ahead.
States that not only is SEL taught explicitly, but social and emotional skills, habits, and mindsets are integrated broadly within the learning process. So SEL has been in our curriculum, and we are still 49th in the nation. Nothing these programs have brought into the classroom has improved our students' education. In fact, it has caused more mass chaos and confusion, and we're seeing those effects from the previous generation now. Get rid of the dangerous mental wellness indoctrination and restore the classroom for teachers and students to have a productive educational experience. If you don't take an ultra-conservative stance you privately share with your community, then the only solution to protect these children is to see a larger mass exodus of this public government education system.
Miss, Miss, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Ms. Hatton.
Thank you, Ms. Hatton.
Mr. President. Yes. Ms. Hatton, before you leave, you made a statement about in order for certain educators to receive a grant, to receive a grant. That was in your statement.
And Dr. Carol Haynes. Dr. Carol Haynes, yes, yes.
Share, could you share that with me one more?
Are you talking about the American Rescue Plan portion? It says to receive federal grants.
For who to receive, probably?
The education system. Whenever you apply for the American Rescue 2021 Plan.
No, that's not, that's not the one. You, you made a statement about in order for certain educators to, to, they had to do something.
For white educators to get...
Who?
That, it's...
For white educators to...
You said white educators?
Yes, yes. Free anti-racist therapy for white educators. And that's a quote from the American Rescue 2021.
I understand, but see, I have a concern about that.
Yeah.
And then...
As a white educator, I have a concern, too.
Right. I understand. And I made that statement earlier about that's the difference. Because what you may espouse, I may not espouse. It may be good for your children, but it may not be good for mine. And while you are trying to protect the rights of your children, I'm trying to protect the rights of mine. Also, when you use phrases like ultra-conservative, I'm not an ultra-conservative. I'm not. And you can't expect me to be. There are some things you and I are probably going to agree on 100%. Then there are some things that we're not going to agree on. And so as we begin discussing, you see, if you get 100%, you don't leave anything on the table for me, left for me. I think that would be selfish for you to get 100% of everything you want, and I get 0% of what I need and want. I think there has to be a coming together. That's why we have a society that is diverse. And I think that the comment that was made in the statement from Amplify was, we are about diversity and not about division.
Which is diversity, equity, inclusion, which is a part and component of CRT and SEL.
Again.
And all of the other agendas.
Again, this country is built on diversity. Now, all the other stuff, but you, you can't build and forget about others. I, I, because that's called purification. That ain't good for me. That is not good for me because purification leads to annihilation. It's not good for me. I know that, that's, that's not good talk for somebody, but I have ears that I hear. And I have a brain to think, I respect you, and I respect others who are here. But you know what respect is? It's a two-way street.
It's earned.
Absolutely. And I respect what you, what, what you're doing. But I would appreciate if I could get...
Yes, I, I've emailed this link, and I've given y'all over the course of probably six months, her, her research articles. She devotes everything, her whole entire career. She is a social and emotional learning expert. And that's what I'm concerned about. SEL on the agenda, we didn't even define this. We didn't even alert our parents to what this is.
And I read, I read Dr., I, I read Dr. William Bell's writings, too. I had a problem with that as well. I had a problem with that. And even though Ms. Carol Haynes may be an icon to some, she may be a threat to others. Because, you know...
A threat to those that want to not protect children from comprehensive sex education and mental chaos that's irreversible. That's what this is.
Now, that's a definition. That's a definition.
Yes, social and emotional learning, that is what this is. So for this to be across our board in our district plan, that's what I'm saying. We need to work together, get it out. Stop allowing all these under the guise of mental health. Leave it to the experts. Get it out of our classrooms. As a teacher, I need to be focused on their academics. And in Dr. Kane, Dr. Haynes's article, she states, "Our classrooms are no longer academic." And this didn't just happen. This happened over a course of 50 years.
And...
And we can stop it.
And I know, I know you shared, you shared all the, you shared all of her research.
Parts of it.
No, all of her research. Because there may be someone else who's an expert on the other side who would just disagree with her.
They believe the classroom should be only about social and emotional learning.
But yeah, you just phrase your, your term, and it's a matter of semantics sometimes.
It is.
And semantically, but semantically, but semantically, that may be a difference because that may be in an opinion if she does not offer...
Thank you, Ms. Hatton.
I'm sorry.
Rick?
Again, I'm sorry. Before Ms. Hatton leaves, Mr. Page, do you have anything to add to Ms. Hatton's comments about SEL or anything that was read to the board relative to her comments?
Well, I'm personally in a lot of our classrooms, as well as some of my instructional team and instructional leaders. And I can assure you that we, we go into classrooms regularly. And Ms. Patton and Ms. Brooks is hearing math being taught. Ms. McCorkle is hearing science being taught. Ms. Austin and Ms. Haley Holly are being exposed to teachers teaching social studies. And when we're teaching ELA, Ms. Linscombe and Ms. Cole are listening to teachers teach literacy skills. They are not in there discussing social and emotional learning. I don't know how many classrooms Ms. Hatton has been in lately because from what I understand, her own children do not attend our school. So I don't know where she's getting, the classrooms are not academic anymore. But when I go into a classroom, I'm hearing math being taught, science being taught, and hands-on science taking place. I'm seeing literacy skills being taught, and I'm seeing, uh, social studies. They're talking about historical documents from our, from our founding fathers. That's what I see when I go into the classroom. And unless I start seeing otherwise, I can't put any validity to what I've heard about non-academics being in the class.
Ms. Hatton, Mr. Page brings up a good point. When's the last time you were in a Washita Parish classroom?
Two years.
Two years ago?
Whenever COVID hit. And I can tell you, in my six and a half years, gap time, other times were allotted throughout our class time and school day that did implement PBIS, which embeds social emotional learning and other coexisting coping mechanisms into our classroom that we were expected to do. So I can give personal testimony that, yes, it is in our, it's in our examples embedded within our curriculum. For instance, financial math, it may give an example that incorporates political agendas, but it's still math. It's still math, but it's there.
Okay.
And I'd, I'd like to see, I, I was not given anything in our private meeting. Um, and at this point, I can, I can assuredly tell myself that it was to, you know, see what I had. Nothing was, nothing was presented to me in collaboration for me to have access to any of the curriculum. I mean, we can sit here and say it's not in there. I want to see it. So do the parents. Give us access. Give us teacher access. Give us a code to Amplify CKLA. Let us read the examples. Let us read the read-alouds. Let us see what the teachers are seeing so that we can confidently say it's not in there. And I'm glad he's saying it's not in there. I don't want this to be in there. I mean, I think we all agree. But we can't naively just trust this company that is backed by Castle, which is the major CRT SEL company, as well as it's all in the framework that the teacher tools and the guidebooks from Amplify Company, SEL and CRT, everything is in those frameworks. And I provided that, so...
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Hatton. We appreciate your comments.
Yes.
Next person to talk is Mr. Byron McCoy.
Thank y'all for giving me a few minutes. I just want to say what I saw here today, Mr. Page. Unprofessional and really tacky. Very tacky.
Thanks, sir.
Y'all should be ashamed. It's like y'all got together and planned this up to run her and drag her through the mud. But let me tell you something. There is a group of people out there that are working to try to bring these things that are happening to our kids in our country to the forefront so y'all can find out about it. And for her to take a parent that has done what she has done and to do this today is ridiculous. And I hate that Mr. McCoy just left because I wanted to let him know that he just took the board's time for his own political agenda. That should have been called to order a long time ago. It's ridiculous.
Roxy Johnson?
Hey, everybody. How are y'all doing? It's nice to see y'all. I'm so glad that we know who the fact checker is on Facebook. Um, I just want to say, we want less government input. However, you are all giving them more control with every compliance you meet and indoctrinating our children for money. Washita Parish doesn't need more experimental programs, curriculums, and surveys. We need our teachers to be given back their authority and ability to create, revise, and implement what they know to be relevant for their students in their classroom and not to be focused on any state testing. Our children need to be taught reading, writing, and arithmetic, and then make education about academics again. And before anybody challenged me about academics, you actually went to bat for me when I was a victim of Common Core knowledge. When I was failing math, because I couldn't do the math the way it was being taught, you fought for me. So you already know, you know, because we talked last night, there is no academics in the classroom. So I do want to ask this, Dr. Coker. Do we utilize the NAEP, NAEP, the National Assessment Education Program?
We have selected students and schools that are chosen by the state to participate in that, that testing.
Okay.
But not every student that's in, I think that's eighth grade.
Is that parental, like, does the, the parents give consent?
Uh, don't know if parents do consent on the NAEP or not. Curtis, do they?
No, we do not.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Noah? I believe that's violating federal law and the Fourth Amendment. If parents are not giving consent for their students, for their kids to actually be utilizing the NAEP, that is violation. And I would love for us to, like, actually converse on this because I would like to know how many parents are being violated of their rights, just as Mr. McCoy said. We all have rights to be protected, and that is violating their kids' privacy. And I also want to ask Mr. Page. So social and emotional learning is defined by Castle. Could you tell us if we seek any guidance, programs, assessments, or surveys from Castle or any other recommended products?
I don't.
Okay, does individual schools, principals, like, do they opt in, opt out of any kind of assessments that they want to provide for their children within the schoolhouse?
Mr. Keegan, you're with some federal programs, any?
No, we do not. We follow the guidelines of, uh, attempt to, uh, to, 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 to. And not only that, the topic is maybe too minimal about, um, a certain dependence of the state front that you go for every year. And if you want to do it, that's just for that. We don't really dabble in adopting, uh, curriculum and certain dependence without justice. Not that's true, but still, uh, the topic that we, uh, we have the other side of.
Okay. That's all for this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Lisa Fleming?
Good afternoon. I just want to say that we all have a stake. We all want our kids to be the best that they could be, from parents to grandparents. Um, what I believe and what you believe personally in the classroom shouldn't be implemented on my grandkids. Personal views and politics do come into play in the classrooms. There have been more than one occasion in Washita Parish where this has occurred. So don't tell me that politics and personal preference aren't... What's the word I'm looking for? Aren't, um, yeah, infiltrated or whatever you want to say, onto our kids. So the teachers can pass their personal agendas and their politics on to our children, and you all know that's true. Um, we're not going to stand for... Um, we're not going to stand apart in Washoe Parish. We're not. We want to see what's being taught. And we want to know the guidelines that you're using to handle these issues. Um, that's all I really have to say is that we want, we want to see the bare bones. And writing and some real, some real responses, not just the BS that we get back. So anytime I have left, I would like to defer to Ms. Hatton.
There's no other cards on that subject, Mr. Hicks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fleming. All right, moving down to item number two. Discussion concerning the failure to follow up Title IX affecting school lunch program. Mr. Tommy Como.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. I got a call yesterday from Mr. McCoy voicing a concern, asking me a question if I was aware of the steps that President Biden had taken toward Title IX funding. My immediate thoughts started thinking about what has been in the news in the last two days. And that's been Roe versus Wade and gun control. And I said, I hope to myself that this is not something that they're using now as a part of Title IX. I asked him to send me his information that he had, and he did. I read it, I'd seen this before. This came out last May, um, on May 5th. The USDA promotes program access was, the word they used was interpreted the sexual discrimination that might take place in Title IX. Their interpretation was based on a court case from 2020 that was involved in, uh, the plaintiffs were Bostic versus Clayton County. This was in Georgia. Their case, this particular case was dealing with the hiring and firing practices of businesses. So the leaders of these groups, the USDA, appointed by President Biden, you shouldn't be surprised at the outcome of their redirection or their discussion. They stated that President Biden's views on preventing and combating discrimination on basis of sex followed this case. Okay? So what does that mean? Not a lot to most of us, but we had a Tennessee Attorney General who spoke up, was involved. He wrote a letter, penned a letter, I don't know how much help he had from other state attorney generals. But in the end, 25 or 26 attorney generals from different states backed what he had written and based on the information that he had gotten. And what he had pointed out as being wrong was the decision that President Biden wanted. Such as, by vastly expanding the concept of demonstration on basis of sex to include gender identity and sexual orientation, the guidance does not, does much more than offer direction. It makes new law, which is illegal. They can't do that. The Attorney General of Tennessee listed several items that he thought relevant as to why this needed to be rescinded by the USDA. First, the guidance is unlawful because it was issued without providing states and other stakeholders the opportunity for input as provided by the Administrative Procedures Act, APA. Second, it must be withdrawn, but was not. Second, it should have been, but was not issued in compliance with the APA participation within the states. It was not. The guidelines, the guidance that they have given, and guidance being a loose term, the ideas that they're pushing were all interpreted from a very liberal point of view from this case from Georgia. So what happens? I'll read you the last paragraph. "We have long had a productive relationship with the federal government managing various food and nutrition programs guided by the principles of the cooperative federalism. We would like to continue this cooperative relationship. But the guidance flouts the rule of law relies on patently incorrect legal analysis that is currently under scrutiny in federal courts and was issued without the states giving, without giving the states the requisite opportunity to be heard. While we are always open to working with your administration with all these matters, under the present circumstances, we are constrained to ask that you direct Secretary Vilsack and the Department of Agriculture to rescind his guidance." This is all, if you're interested in following it or getting a copy of it, you can go to the USDA website and read a longer version of what I just told you. You can go to Attorney General of Louisiana. He has a copy of the letter posted that they all signed off on. So where does that lead us? It could lead us in a bind, to be quite honest with you, because 65, 60 to 65% of our students are fed through the federal program. 60 to 65%. Some of you's answer will be, well, let's don't take Title IX funds. Then who's going to feed the kids? So we have to look at all of this information and hope, my hope from May when this first came out, was that somebody, unfortunately, would have a discrimination suit filed against them, that it could go to court and then move on up to the Supreme Court so that we could get a clarification about what was being said. So far, there have been no court cases involved in this. So the Supreme Court has not been involved in changing or making any type of move to do so. So that's what little I have. You can do like I did, you can go read. Thank you, Mr. McCoy, for sending it to me. Again, I had seen it earlier. Uh, that's all I have on that.
Any discussion from the board, sir?
Mrs. Hatton and I had a conversation yesterday about that. And, uh, that brought some concern to me as well.
We're all concerned about it.
Yes, sir. Very, very concerned about that. And I pray that, you know.
He was wanting to tie this, in case you don't know, he was wanting to tie the Title I funds to allowing a transgender student to attend any restroom of his choice. And you don't like it, I don't like it, none of us like it. And hopefully, we won't ever have to make a decision that goes along those lines.
And I, along with the rest of the board, I think, I mean, we're going to be proactive with parents. I think parents need to be aware of it. Uh, this is not, I look at it, it's not just a school issue. It's a community, it's a state, it's.
Society, society issue.
That's right.
Turn your television on, watch commercials, you can see it every day.
I know.
Watch your kids, watch your kids when the commercials come on. They're not watching the game show that you may be watching, which also is inclusive, if you haven't noticed that already. They're not watching that show. They're watching those advertisements. And you have to mute your advertisements in order to watch the television show with a kid. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Tom.
But I guarantee you, we're going to be proactive on it.
Thanks, Tom. Rick, you got anybody else?
Tommy, I'd like to make a comment too, Jerry. Tommy and I talked about this last year, I think, when it first came up. And, uh, you know, as a grandparent with two grandkids in the school system, I told Tommy straight up that from my perspective, there's no way I would ever vote or support.
Absolutely.
Male and female using the same restroom in Washoe Parish.
Absolutely.
And, uh, as a board, as a board member, and I don't, I feel that I'm speaking on behalf of the whole board when I say that. Uh, and I'm hoping we don't get in a situation where Title I funding is threatened as a result of that decision because it'd be a tough decision for the board. But I know where we would all land, and that would be the, you know, girls go to girls' restrooms and boys go to boys' restrooms, K through 12. And so I don't think, from my perspective or the board's perspective, that that's going to be an issue with us going forward. I hate that, uh, President Biden has drawn the line from a funding standpoint, trying to put pressure on local communities to make that decision. And I hope it doesn't come down legally to that, uh, from our perspective as a board. But I feel pretty comfortable that the board is going to make the right decision in that issue going forward. So I want to make sure the community understands our position on that.
And we shouldn't be surprised because before even the presidential election, he announced his bucket list. This was in the bucket, that he was, one of the things in the bucket that he wanted to see done, inclusion, transgender, sexual choice.
I think that, that, I stand in the best of that and I don't want a federal program.
Thank you.
Have you received any pressure or any guidance from the federal government on Title I funding being helped out because of reluctance to go along with the guidelines that's been thrown out?
Absolutely. I have not received that knowledge from any federal program that we've seen. I have not received any pressure from that. I assure you, if you do, that you will know that.
Thank you.
And that's really the scary part. In the letter that this Attorney General from Tennessee wrote, he stated that the state had to be ready to take over this by August 3rd. August 3rd is here. And we haven't received, as of yesterday, any guidelines from the state showing us or telling us what direction we go, or even from Attorney General Landry, if there had been anything done in regard to his letter. So that's scary.
I saw a letter yesterday from Dr. Coker. He gave clarification from the state, and I'll say something about Coker, then you can probably clarify if I'm making a mistake on this. But the letter I read from Dr. Coker came from the state, and their interpretation revolved around the Title I funds associated with segregation in the cafeteria, uh, not bathroom usage. And, uh, reminded the school system that federal funds could be, uh, considered or manipulated if we fail to comply with the Title IX from a cafeteria eating standpoint. Which means that the school system can't segregate boys at one table and girls at another table. If you did that, then it might jeopardize Title IX funding from the federal government. So I know Dr. Coker has looked at that, and we're going to make sure that we're in compliance with that particular issue going forward. So, Dr. Coker, anything you'd like?
And I just want to mention that, uh, Roxy had emailed me wanting to be on the agenda. And because we have not heard anything, and if I were still waiting for the state to give me information, we still would not have heard anything. But, uh, two days ago, I emailed Trey Foles, who is our Assistant Superintendent at the state. He's kind of the liaison between the superintendents and, and the state. And so he, and probably a week, week and a half ago, I forwarded what Roxy had sent me to Ms. Carrero. And I said, check with your state people. I need to know where this is going and what they are saying. And we got the same exact response. You got it from, uh, the lady in school food service. I got it from one of the, uh, people that's governing this particular, uh, thing right now. And it's not a lot. They didn't send a lot of information to us, other than the fact that pretty much what Greg had said and, uh, what Jolynn has. It's a, it's a paragraph is what they sent back. And I'll read the paragraph to you. This is coming straight from the state and don't know that they've put it out to anyone else. And this is who this is coming from. "In May 2022, the USDA FNS Civil Rights Division issued a memorandum on Bostic versus Clayton County and its application to USDA FNS programs. This memo clarifies that the prohibition of discrimination based on sex includes gender identity and sexual orientation. In general, SFA's, institutions, and organizations participating in the child nutrition programs are not permitted to separate children on any protective basis, including gender, during the service of program meals or snacks. In keeping with federal nondiscrimination laws and policies as outlined by the Department of Agriculture USDA programs, this was reinforced in 2015. No funding to CNPs is currently being withheld due to the updated USDA nondiscrimination policy. If schools continue to provide equal access to child nutrition programs in regards to gender, as they have since the inception of Title IX of the Educational Amendments of 1972, this clarification to the policy should not impact CNP programs, uh, program operations." And it was, that was it. That's what she told us. Now, that and, and I think that you've heard already that this board is for girls using girls' restrooms, boys using boys' restrooms. I also, and I'll bring my grandkids back up again, uh, I don't want a young man coming into a girl's restroom at West Washoe High School where my granddaughter is going to be going to school. And I don't think that you're going to have a person on this board, and I don't think there's a person out there or in our community that's going to be supportive of that kind of action. And so I know a lot of the things is proactive. And the reason that I went ahead and put this on the agenda is because Mr. Como said, let's talk about it. The August 3rd deadline was, and you have to understand with state and federal governments, deadlines mean nothing. That's why they have done the 60-day period. And I think in the next 60 days, there needs to be so much people swapping the federal government on this particular issue that they can't stand to have any more sent to them. That's what I think. And so, uh, certainly don't mind drafting anything for this board to send to these federal people to say, we are in support of what the attorney generals are saying. And we feel like that, and I, I will tell you, I just don't believe, I think the federal government found this out, that they did the right thing and in the right way of how they tried to push this out and bring it to us. Because you don't throw something on local districts, even through the state, as quickly as what this has been thrown. So.
Dr. Coker, I certainly would love to sign that letter in, in support of, of the board's stance.
Yes. Okay.
I guess in that case, I am an old conservative.
To clarify, they're, they're, boys go to boys restroom and girls go to girls restroom in the Washoe Parish School Board currently.
Yes.
Yes.
We have had some kids in the past that were actually in the process of transing. And with those we worked with on an individual basis, along with their parents, and we, we made it work for the very few that were going through that particular, uh, transing state.
So they potentially use the family restroom?
Correct. That is correct.
Yes.
Has that been a policy that we've adopted too, Dr. Coker, going forward? Is that the way we're going to handle them going forward? That if we have a transgender student that comes forward expressing bathroom usage, that we direct them to the family restroom?
We have to check with our legal, I don't know that we have a policy established on that right now. It's something.
I know we've probably had very few instances, but in the past, we've handled them that way, correct?
We've had very few cases of transgender.
Yeah, right.
Right.
I think it, I think the board voted, we don't have any, any one assigned to the policy procedure committee, but we'll have parents, we'll have other entities.
At some point, I, I would agree with Greg, we probably need to begin discussing that. To assure the public and the parents that we are in agreement, uh, that, uh, moving, well, not just moving forward, but as it is now, we don't allow mixture of genders of. as it is now, we don't allow mixture of genders, of cross genders into bathrooms. It's going to be males for male, female for female, and female for female. And that's where we, that's how we stand now. But Noah, Noah, I guess, you know, legal guidance on that as well.
As Dr. Coker pointed out, there've been very, very few cases that I'm aware of. Two or three that I'm aware of, that there are children for medical reasons that have been undergoing some transition. Dr. Coker, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are not just simple requests that I want to use another restroom. They're for children for, for medical reasons and medical needs that have been going through an evaluation process, a medical process. And I know Dr. Coker has worked with those parents very closely and the parents' positions for those, for those children. So it's been handled on a case by case basis. But it's been where documentation's been required and there's been close consultation with parents where they are. On rare occasions, there's been some medical issues where the children have been going through this process. And it takes months and years sometimes to complete that process. But it's been handled on an individualized basis and case by case basis where the parents have been involved with the children. Is that correct, Dr. Coker?
That is correct.
Mr. Manley, you got anybody?
Yes, Ms. Hicks, I do. The first person is Byron McCord.
First of all, I want to apologize for being so upset a while ago. It's been a, it's been a rough morning. See, this morning, I acted on emotions. And I got upset when I got, I slept a little late, got up at eight. And I let my dogs out because they were still in the kennel and I was upset they were in the kennel. Not critically thinking about why they were in the kennel. They went outside, my lab outside, got a hold of one of my chihuahuas. Got a hold of it good. Did a lot of damage. But the most damage that was done was me having to watch my wife hold that chihuahua and having to watch my kids cry about it. We wrapped it up and we took it to vet. And I just got a message a while ago, she's going to be okay. But a lot of damage was done there because I didn't think in the moment about what to do. I just worked, I just acted off of emotions. See, I was a, I was a student of the school system for a long time. And back then, I didn't realize that that was what was being done. And it still affects me today. So this social emotional learning may not be called that, but it happens. You know, and he, Dr. Pate used the example a while ago that a, a car company owns a bunch of different cars. And it made me think about Coca-Cola. Coca-Cola owns a bunch of different products out there. But when we get down to the bottom line, whether one's Coca-Cola the drink or whether it's their sports drink that's healthy and great for you, bottom line is none of them are good. They're all bad. They all contain things that harm us. No matter how they sell it up, decorate it, and hand it to us and sell it at whatever price, it's still not good for us. And that's what I think about when I think about these programs. And so what if a student, and I know where you stand on this, but I want to know how far are we going to stand up against it? Because if they come down and say, you have to do this, how far are we going to stand up? Because one student working off of emotions and deciding that he wants to walk into a girl's bathroom is going to do more damage for the kids in the bathroom. And then him himself will have to live with that the rest of his life. There's so much damage can be done in that moment. And I appreciate what y'all are saying today right now in this moment. But we've got to stand on that and stand firm on that. And I know they're coming after our food, right? Coming after our food. This is something my mom sent me this morning. You know, you always got to listen to mom's wisdom. She said, whether or not our children have food on their plates should not depend on compromising their privacy or their peace of mind. So I just want to leave y'all with this one scripture. In Matthew 6:26, it says, look at the birds of the air. They neither sow nor reap nor gather into barns, and yet our heavenly Father feeds them. And it says, are you, and when it says you right there, I think about our children. Our children, are they not more valued than they? God will provide. We've got to go ask the people for more money. I promise you, God will provide. Thank y'all for your time.
Ms. Tiffany Hatton?
Thank you. Here we are again with federal monies dictating their control over our local systems, revealing that there truly is no, no local control because money's going to supersede the well-being of our children and our community values and beliefs. I believe we are a conservative community, so that means we want less government input. We're so deep into the federal, state, and grantor handouts and assistance that the real solutions seem absolutely insane to even consider. The only solution we have right now to get ahead and be proactive is as a board, we need to be sending a notice to the USDA, Louisiana State Department of Education, BESI, the Biden administration, with our community intentions based off of our AG Landry's public opinion. Be ready to file the lawsuit that's probably going to follow that. The federal registry is now open for public comment. We see the federal control and all the monies collected from them. This federal registry is one step in taking our stance. What the federal government implements and deems acceptable will echo down into every program, grant, financial assistance, and guidance for every component of our local government and school system, which we allow them into. Our AG's opinion is that there is a, there's a faulty interpretation of that Bostic case. Our Supreme Court sides with protecting our constitutional rights. We've seen it time and time again here recently that they've stood firm on right. So there's always a concern of the OCR or the Office of Civil Rights coming back to retaliate or have cases with the civil rights. I just want to encourage y'all not to allow that to stop you having a plan in place to file lawsuit. Because with the AG's backing, other states in our nation, and the way our Supreme Court is going, I don't think that there's a real concern there. What guidance, what guidance has the LSBA and Superintendent Association given our district? I think you may have read that a little bit earlier. Shared bathrooms and even more scenarios are potential outcomes. We can at least send a letter of our support to our AG, making our position that our, that our community opposes these implementations. We need to include that we will not comply with any unsafe changes like the restrooms if they become a requirement. So I have a question. I'm just trying to think through this. Is this even relevant to our Washita Parish system? Do we have cafeteria managers and staff discriminating against our students, denying them food services? That doesn't even sound right. So this was not, this wouldn't even pertain to our schools because I believe our cafeteria managers and things would never deny students food and nutrition. So I just want to encourage y'all to be a board exemplary like Tara Bone and other school boards. And know that the community backs you in this. Send the letters on our behalf, on behalf of your educators, and support our AG.
Ms. Roxy Johnston?
Okay. I had a speech, like, all prepared for this, but y'all actually shocked me with being very public about y'all's opinion. And I want to say thank you and I appreciate that. However, me and Scotty, we have gained a relationship. He's about the only board member that converses back and forth on a, you know, on a daily basis. So it's very a learning that I know if one child out at West Washita, because apparently West Washita has a lot of the shenanigans going on right now. If one child bucks the system and gets their family to file a lawsuit, y'all pretty much would say y'all's hands are tied and y'all just go on with the flow. So we just want to know in the near future that y'all's hands will not be tied when it comes down to y'all having to actually make a decision to fight or flight.
Are you asking?
Yeah.
I mean, we just said that.
Well, I know what you said too. One child, one child's family can buck the system and they'll fight it. And if they do, y'all will roll over.
That is potential. That is potential, right? So, but I mean.
So one family fights and then y'all want to roll over?
Ms. Johnson, I'm picking for myself at hand. I don't compromise my moral values for any financial reward or need from the federal government. I stand on that because I hear representing not only my grandchildren, but all the children in Washita Parish. And when it comes down to males going to male bathrooms, females going to female bathrooms, I will stand on that all the way to Supreme Court if that's what it takes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manley. And actually.
And I think I speak for just about all the board members here when I say that.
I have a question for you. And this is, you don't have to answer. You said something about the segregation of boys and the girls in the cafeteria. You know, I've never, I don't know. I've never heard of that. But I do know on the school bus, the bus drivers are encouraged to separate boys and girls. So do you see where it kind of conflicts the interest of?
Skeeter, would you like to address that? Skeeter's our school bus director. Skeeter, she raised a question of about segregation of boys and girls on the bus route. Is there anything you'd like to address on that? Do we do that? Or is that illegal? Or what's the reason for that, if it does happen?
I don't think it's illegal. We do have the elementary fund to do some drives, have boards, and try to grow them.
But as far as you know, there's nothing illegal about that from a state law or federal law standpoint?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Gary Fleming?
Thank y'all. Y'all have been very informative to me today. And I want to believe everything you say. When it comes to boys' and boys' rooms, girls' and girls' rooms, y'all said that you did not have a formal plan or policy. Is that something y'all are going to work on? To where we have in black and white what our policy is in this parish. If a transgender guy wants to push the envelope, like the lady just said, all it takes is one to file a suit. I know you don't want to roll over on that. We don't want you to. So let's have a plan in place that whenever this occurs, and it's, here's that this is going to get worse as time goes on. So us as citizens can say, okay, there's no second guessing. This is what our policy is going to be. That's what we're asking. Thank you.
Mr. Fleming, you know, from a board member's standpoint, our policy's always been that I've been on the board since 1995 off and on. And it never has come to an issue of a question. I've always understood, and Dr. Coker's always understood, and our policy currently is, boys go to boys bathrooms, girls go to girls bathrooms. If a boy goes into a girl's bathroom, at this point in time, there will be disciplinary action taken on that particular student because he went in the wrong restroom. Is that correct, Dr. Coker?
That is correct.
That's our policy now. It's going to continue to be our policy. The only transgender aspect that we've talked about with our attorney is, if you have a person that says, a student says I'm transgender, then we're going to address that, let them go to a separate family bathroom. That might be something we need to address in our policy. But our policy's always been, common sense tells you that if you are a male, you'll go to a male bathroom. If you're a female, you go to a female bathroom. I want to make sure we don't get that mixed up.
Okay. I'll agree with you there, but you just threw in common sense. And that seems to have gone out the window.
Sometimes our country seems to have lost that. You're exactly correct.
So, okay. Thank you.
To, to clarify on Roxy's statement about it just takes one. Sometimes I think conversations between Roxy and I get, what I meaning is, it only takes one person to file a lawsuit. It only takes one, what I'm saying is only, it only takes one person to file a lawsuit. So that means you have to defend that lawsuit is what I'm, that's the point I'm trying to get at. Okay. I'm not, I'm not discounting what was said. I'm saying it only takes one person to file that lawsuit. So now you have to defend it. And we are saying, we are going to defend that a boy goes in a boy's bathroom and a girl goes in a girl's bathroom. I have had discussion with some other districts because from my discussion in, in several, several states, not just in Louisiana, a lot of them are looking at saying that until you, or until a transgender or whatever initials they are, until you have had a completed medical surgery, medical whatever, transformation, you have to go to the restroom that the good Lord made you. So if they've completed that transformation, then they can go to that other restroom that they choose. So maybe that's something we need to look at, adding, adding that verbiage to it.
I'd like to just also add too, because I think what Ms. Roxy is saying makes a lot of sense. And if we were to defend our position, which we say it is our policy, but it's unwritten. So if it's an unwritten policy, how do you defend something that's not written?
Well, I think, I think Dr. Coker brought up a good point a while ago too, Harold. I think it's something that we need to let our policy committee look at seriously as far as getting a formal policy from the board's perspective on handling transgender students. And bring that back before the board and let us look at it and consider the alternatives and vote on it.
Oh, I agree. I agree. And now, now we have something to defend. But if we were to go into a situation, court situation, and we don't have a policy, but we're trying to defend something. And we said, well, you know, that's always just been the way that it is. Yeah, because it's never been challenged, but not once it becomes challenged. And as this gentleman said, common sense doesn't even make sense anymore.
To some people.
Right, to some people.
To some people.
We got a lot of folk.
It's still a political issue. You can't, you're not going to get politics out of education. You're not going to get education out of politics. Elections have consequences. You know, we're dealing with inflation, in my opinion, because of an election. We're dealing with a governor because of an election who's vetoed almost every major bill that was passed that I'm going to say this group and myself and some up here agree with. And then you go with the politics in there that we got representatives, not, not our representatives. We have representatives that won't go override the veto. So that's politics. Because it's about three or four of them, that's education related bills. That's being vetoed. And a lot of them is supported by the LSBA, by the teachers union, by others. That's supporting the, the governor's vetoes, which goes back to politicals in education. So you can forget ever getting politics out of education. In my opinion. I may be wrong. I hope I am wrong. But obviously, it's not. It's been that way for 50 years or longer.
Every presidential race that comes on.
That's right. Like you said, it was on the bucket list.
Yep.
Mr. Manley, you have a?
Ms. Hicks, we do not have any more cards on that topic. Okay. Moving down to item number three, discussion of Washita Parish School Board joining with the OPPJ, that's Washita Parish Police Jury, to move forward with rerouting of Cable Cut Off Road. Mr. Jack Clampett?
I have a glass.
Ms. Hicks? Mr., uh, huh? Scotty Wagner?
Yeah. You want me to take it from here?
Take it from here.
All right. Well, we got Mr. Clampett and we got Mr. Fuller Gadberry didn't, didn't make it. And Mr. Jay Morrison, Kevin Cosby.
Yeah. So I want to, I want to thank Kevin and Jack for coming and sticking around through this. But just to start off, if y'all want to come to the podium, I'll kind of lead into this. Just to start off, this is, this is actually something that Jack had, had brought up to me back in 2019. There's one thing I am sick to death of saying, and everybody else is too, is due to COVID, this seems to have got pushed back. But this was actually kind of Jack's idea and brainchild. And I think it's a good one of moving the, rerouting the Cable Cut Off Road over to the Cable Lodge Road that stops it from going through the West Washita campus in between the, the main campus and the ag building and tennis courts. So we're here today to get Jack and Kevin, give us some information on how this project could be possibly funded through a capital outlay program through the state that would, we work in conjunction with the Washita Parish School Board and the state. So Jack, if you.
This thing started two or three years ago. Ms. Oats had called me. She was concerned about the traffic coming through school with the new ag building being on the other side. And at that time, she wanted to discuss maybe putting up some auxiliary lighting on the crosswalk. But the more we talked, the more it became apparent that the way to do it would be with some kind of bypass road and close that section. But the more we talked, the more it came apparent that the way to do it would be with some kind of bypass road and close that section. So I sat down and talked with Kevin about it, and he come up with different ideas, and we kind of kicked it around a little bit. But like Scotty said, COVID intervened and we kind of got pushed over on the back burner. So we get to looking at it now, and one thing, don't hold me to three minutes. It takes me a minute and a half to ask how your mama doing. But Capital Outlay in Washington Parish was non-existent for the parish for ten years. We didn't get any money. And then Jay Morris and Floyd Gadberry got elected, and since then, we've started getting capital outlay money on a regular basis. We got a strong advocate in the House, and Foy sets on the Transportation Committee, you know, where the money's at. Jay Morris sits over in the Senate, and he has definitely helped push these projects. So both of them are interested in this project, which means it stands, I think, a good chance of getting in capital outlay. So let's kind of go the money, and, and I want you to, everything I talk about, remember, some of these are I-thinks and some of them are estimates. Don't say, but you said this is what it was going to be, and you said this was going to happen. This is what I think will happen. We have time to get this project in capital outlay for this year. It's close because we have to have it in October. But what it would effectively do is reroute the traffic that goes through the school now over to the west. So that basically you wouldn't have all the through traffic. Kevin and I have discussed whether you seal the entrance on five forty-six or not. Uh, I'm an advocate for sealing it, but we're going to have to let the safety folks and DOTD look at that. We've got a couple entrances in front of the school that should be able to handle anything. It should make it a safer intersection because I have no idea who designed the fiasco that's out there now. Where Capes comes in and one fifty-one comes in and the cut-through road comes in, it's just not a real safety factor there. It, it's too much traffic coming in, too short a distance with no red lights. So we're looking at taking that traffic over to the west, keeping it out of the school, and giving that section to the school and letting them use it for as they will. Now, the problem I had before, I didn't have any idea what this project was going to cost. And Senator Morris has been asking me, said, Jack, I need some ideas of the cost if y'all going to decide to do that, so we can start looking for pockets of money. And there's going to be pockets of money now again next year. The surplus is going to be pretty good, which means you'll get, have a chance at the cash account, and there'll be some appropriations money. The thing that surprised me, and, and I'm not sure I agree with Kevin, but he's the expert on this, and he's usually pretty close. He feels like we can do this project for about nine hundred thousand. So if we can do it for nine hundred thousand and it goes through capital outlay, you're looking at about a twenty percent match to get the project done. So for the love, say, of a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars, we can put this project through. It's primarily aimed at the safety of the kids at West Washington. I'm not going to tell you it's going to speed up traffic. I don't think it will, but it will make the campus a much safer, secured campus. So we would like for the school board to join with us in applying for this capital outlay project. Kevin will do the work. We'll do the application, but we'd like to fly for it jointly and see if we can get this road put in. Now, if you've got political questions, those are mine. If you've got engineering questions, Kevin's here to answer any engineering questions you got.
So would the, um, the, the twenty percent match?
Max would be, and I'd like that split between the school board and the police jury.
That was my question.
Yeah. So each one of us would be on the hook for no more than a hundred thousand dollars. Now, again, it comes back to which part of money you get it out of. Comes through capital outlay, which is where we're going to apply, you're a twenty percent match. If it comes through, we had HB five ninety-two this year. There's no match in five ninety-two. If you can get in one of those bills, you get a hundred percent funded. And that's what we'd really like to see, but we would at least want capital outlay. Now, I don't know how much you know about capital outlay, but I'm going to describe it as if you're getting a date. When you first go apply, all you've done is go down there and talk to the girl. If you get noticed and she gives you a phone number, you're in what's called Priority Five. Priority Five means you're not going to get any money this year. You're going to have to wait till next year. So next year, they move you from five to two. Two doesn't always get funded, except in years like we just had, where there's so much money out there, they're funding the ones and the twos. But it could take three years to move up from five to one. And in one, you're going to get funded, as long as there's bonded money. So there's always little ifs when you go along this trail. But because of the legislatures we have today, this is a real good project for us to push this town. It's one everybody can get behind. Nobody's going to look at it and say, that's a waste of money. And to just give you an idea of what they're doing with our money, I won't mention the parish, but they gave eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to upgrade the softball, hardball field, excuse me, in one parish, not a capital outlay. And it's a it-a-bitty parish, okay? Well, it's Mr. Crossby's home parish, as a matter of fact. And then we gave seventy-five thousand to teach teenagers T-E- adequate, T-E-A, T-E- adequate. I don't understand the need for T-E- adequate. As legisla, as educators, y'all probably do. I don't understand it. But there's a lot of money in there that we're letting get away because we're not asking for it. And honestly, before we got the legislatures we have now, we weren't getting any money out of that move. Nothing. Ten years, no capital outlay whatsoever. Since then, we've got almost six million. But it's a good project that we'd like to partner with you on. We think it's a good one. Uh, question?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm all for this. I know exactly what you're talking about, and I'm a hundred percent in favor of it. But once this road is done, who's going, are we going to be responsible for maintaining that road when it's closed?
The parish road, we maintain it.
You maintain it?
You're going to maintain what's in your parking lot.
That's what I'm talking about. What's in our parking lot?
That would be awesome. And the reason I say that is because the thing to do would be to revoke that road and give it to you. That way, whatever you get ready to do on it, it's yours to do it.
Do we want to park a lot on it or?
That's right. You want to get out there and play soccer on it. It's now your road.
One, one thing to bring up, if, if DOTD comes back and says, hey, now that you're moving the traffic down or potentially moving the traffic down to Cable Lodge, you got to put turn lanes there. That's not in this nine hundred thousand dollar area. That's to strictly build this one road. So we, we would be groups of families own that track to the south, uh, where we're cutting across. So the yellow line is pretty much what the school board owns around that West Washington High School. Then the, uh, pink and blue lines, the blue's the center line, and the pinkish color, purple is the edge of the road.
Kevin, having been familiar with turn lanes and DOTD of Stirling Middle School, uh, my question to y'all at this point in time is, have y'all done a traffic study and know what DOTD is going to require out there for turn lanes? Because, uh, you know.
I noticed last night my name was on this agenda, so this got put together this morning.
In working with DOTD on Stirling Middle School, Dr. Coker and Dabo and I can speak from experience. Uh, we did a traffic study, and DOTD come back wanting five turn lanes.
Which would be more expensive.
And the school board is being asked and required to pay for those turn lanes. So I'm just letting you know from a funding standpoint down the road, and I know you're familiar with DOTD, that there's a possibility of maybe another five hundred to a million dollars coming in on this project for turn lanes.
If, if they require that.
There was a, there was a.
Asking that money for capital outlay.
Right, right.
There was a, there was a traffic study done a couple of years ago, I believe, Foy.
For that intersection?
Yeah, on that intersection. And, and it was, um, it was surprisingly low.
Is that the one at the tiny end of the Lodge Road or up at the?
Well, at the, actually, it was at both. Um, it had, of course, it had peak times, but it was surprisingly low through the days. But you go by the peak times, I'm sure, with the turning lane. Is that be right, Kevin?
And, and, yeah, it'd be peak times what they'd look at.
Right.
But the majority of the traffic going through that road that would be abandoned and turned by kids to the school, all that school traffic could potentially still come down there. So all, all you're talking about is the general traffic. The general public traffic would be routed out over to Cable Lodge. So it shouldn't put much of a burden on that other intersection.
There's actually turn lanes there now.
Well, I've been out there many a times when bell rings and the kids have to walk from the school to the ag building. The cars going up down that road, the kids had to stop. I, I built them, uh, out of, uh, shit, uh, greenhouses out there for, and that was a dangerous situation. Them kids had to stop waiting for traffic to come walking over.
Kevin, my. This is what's been done at other schools.
Kevin, I got a question about the, uh, are you turning across? Is that, is that Kilpatrick's property?
No, Kilpatrick is the rectangle that runs along the road to the west, Cable Lodge. That's actually, uh, there's Sam Henry's estate.
Okay, Sam Henry, okay.
Him and, uh, Mo Hardy. And they've got plans of, of putting some lots over their own capes. Right now, we looking at that with them. Uh, so they've got that laid out for lots, so it, it would be clipping the corner of one of those lots.
So it would clip the corner right there at the, uh, softball field?
Yes.
Is there no way to take it a little further onto the?
We could take it a little tighter. That's at a four percent super elevation. So if you get much steeper than that, you're going to be at twenty-five mile an hour, and you're going to be creating possibly another traffic hazard. You'd be removing one and adding another one to a lesser degree.
And, and again, one of the reasons that we hadn't got more information for you, we will make sure this is something you want to do. I, I don't want to bail off in the school board business and then I say, this is a project we want to work.
Well, I can, I can speak on, on part of the, uh, my opinion on this is that this, anything that we can do to secure our sites is just a plus. And that school's not going away. That school's going to be, be there when all of us are gone. And if we can make it safer by doing this, uh, capital outlay and putting it out there, I think a hundred thousand dollars is cheap to make something safer for what we'd be doing at this high school right now.
And then once that cable cutoff, that portion is revoked, it would revert back to the property on both sides, which is the school board. Then you can put a gate, you can do whatever with it.
I just, I just think it makes sense from a safety and security.
Yes.
Measure.
I check both of those boxes.
It does.
From a safety standpoint, you got a student crossing the road there going to the tennis court and.
Let me tell you, that's part of the country, as y'all well know, is a little different than the rest of the world. They don't fill out census reports. They don't want the government knowing what they're doing. But me and Kevin argue with this on a regular basis. Forty-five percent of all the building permits are in my district, which is south of the interstate over to the river out of Parish Line. Forty-five percent, and it has been for the last ten years. But Kevin says, eh, they not growing out there. His own district, before he did the traffic study out there, has went up twenty-eight thousand cars a day in that one district over five years. So you tell me where people are living. That school's going to stay there and it's going to grow, it's always true. Much to the chagrin of some Calhoun people that are running the Calhoun, Don Popper, but. So that's all I have. Thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
So I move that, uh, as a board, Washington Parish School Board joins with Washington Parish Police Jury in, uh, partnering to submit this for capital outlay funding to the state, of course, with the support of Foy, Gadberry, and, uh, Jay Morris and Kevin and, and Jack.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yeah, no comment, Carson?
No comment, Carson.
Okay. Thank y'all, gentlemen.
Bill in the jury room.
All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Thank y'all.
Y'all appreciate you saying.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Kevin.
Um, moving down to item number four. Discuss the need for fencing at Woodlawn Elementary at the Cafeteria Inn. Mr. Scotty Wagner?
Yeah, this is something, um, again, goes back to safety. Again, goes back to something that was discussed and looked at pre-COVID. Ms. Jane Biggs is here, um, with it. She had, had, uh, contacted me a few weeks ago or a week or so ago about the possibility of looking at some kind of fencing across the rest of the, the elementary campus, which is on Highway thirty-four. The main campus, which actually, when I went there, was the junior high, but it goes into what now is the cafeteria. There's a grassy area that is used for playground, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Jane, but it's, uh, so the children, which is elementary, okay, I think it's first, second grader. So it's totally open on thirty-four, which, um, potentially a, a student slip away or something and get into the road. Also potential of, it's very easy access for someone to duck into that turnoff, pick up a kid and be gone in either direction in a matter of minutes. So, um, I wanted to add this on the agenda, the one to have it discussed that potentially, um, now Stephen and I maybe can go out and, and whoever else would like to go out to, uh, to look at, see if we, if we, if we want to extend the fence that's there across to the cafeteria, or even potentially a, a fence and potential gate where the bus is turning in, which is actually going to add more probably logistical. Could make things harder and easier, I guess. But anyway, I'd just like to get this looked at, just we can get something moved forward on this. I'd like to see something done relatively quickly, um, especially with the fencing from the main campus over to the cafeteria.
Right. Scotty, I, I don't think we're going to have to name an architect for this particular project. I think that if we get, uh, Stephen and Ms. Biggs and you and me and, uh, just come and look at it, because I know that we do a lot of fencing at other areas and try to get a price and maybe bring something back in August to, uh, to share with the board to see what solution we could come up with to do that. If we see that at that point, we, we might need an architect to, to advise us on it, then we can certainly go that route then too.
Sounds good.
Well, it's Coker. I also, uh, agree that if it's dealt with safety and security, just like the previous item on the agenda, that, that we would move expeditiously because, uh, that, uh, could potentially be, uh, cause a, become a concern. So the quicker the better. I would also like to suggest that since we, in our last board meeting, uh, hired a safety and security supervisor, that, uh, he will be included in, in those measures.
I would love for him to join us at Woodlawn.
He might as well get his feet wet and earn his money.
You're right. Put it on your calendar, Mr. Fremont.
All right, thank you.
Any more discussion? Mr. Manley, we have any cards for this item?
Uh, no comment cards on this subject, Mr. Hicks.
Okay, moving down to item number five, selection of architect for safety and security needs for entrances at West Side Schools. Mr. Tommy Colmo?
Another safety item. Uh, we have some elementary schools and middle schools on the west side whose design is not the best in trying to keep access to the main hallways separate from the entrance area. And we're warning to, I've talked to Orlando, Mr. Fremont, on this previously, and he said we ought to get a little professional input on this, and I've talked to Dr. Coker and Hickreid. So I would like to name Tim Brandon as the person to go out to give us some ideas on what needs to be done. Some of these may be easy fixes. Some of the older designed buildings are not going to be easy fixes. So I move that we appoint Tim Brandon Association as the architect for this.
Second. We have motion and a second to, to elect Tim Brandon as the architect?
I got a second.
Got a motion?
Yeah.
Motion.
Okay. Mr. Manley, you got any cards on this item?
Uh, no comment cards on this particular item, Mr. Hicks.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second. All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries.
Mr. Colmo, you know about how many schools you're talking about, the number of schools?
You want to know?
Yeah.
We're talking about four junior highs and two elementaries currently.
That many, okay.
I, I would like to, I know there's a couple that's potentially not on the list, but I would like for you to go look at. I wouldn't own junior highs not on the list. I would like to have it just added to look that, that, because I think there is a.
I include it.
Potential.
Well, why look at it? Let's go look at all of them.
And let me, let me kind of tell you, the, the purpose of this is to try to hone in on those schools. I saw this growing exponentially, I can tell you. I, I was looking at the schools, as was Tommy, that do not have the mantraps. And that's what we're gonna be looking at. That's the term that they use for safety and security, that when you enter the front doors of the school, you can't go anywhere else in that building. You are trapped in the area, and I hate to say it like that, but that's what it is. And so those were the ones that, uh, we certainly are going to prioritize, focus and look at. We're not only looking on West Side schools, we have already, as a matter of fact, Mr. Fremont has already gone to every East Side school, and we are in good shape on the East Side for, uh, for furnishing those type of, of situations. So that's kind of the, the thought or the process behind that.
And Mr. Fremont, I would love to, uh, also share with, with you, uh, whenever you have some, some time. I know you're awfully busy, but, uh, several schools in, in, where, in the zone where I, I represent, uh, just to go back over those. I know you all, Dr. Coker, have probably done a wonderful job, and I'm familiar with some that are secured. Most of them are secured, as a matter of fact. Just one or two that I'd like to share with you all.
Sure.
That I have a concern with, and, and I think one is where you, well, your entrance of that school is fine. Just had some concerns about some other things.
Okay.
In the back.
Mr. Manley, you got any, uh, cards on item number five?
Uh, no, sir. Mr. Hicks, we do not.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. So all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, moving down to item number six, selection of architect for Sterton Elementary.
Wait a minute, Mr. Geis.
What?
He's ready. He jumped up, he ready to go. This is Mr. Manley. So I'm up?
I can move you up if you'd like, that's no problem.
So I'm up, Mary?
Yeah.
I second.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, bring before the board a recommendation to select, uh, TBA as the architect for the Sterton Elementary renovations on the East Side bond proposal. I talked to, uh, uh, Tim Brandon this morning and visited with him a little bit on it, so, give him an idea of kind of what we're looking at from our construction needs at the elementary school. So I've asked him to go ahead and start on it, so I wanted to get the board's approval for him being the official architect. I will also be bringing in August at our next meeting to the board, securing Mr. Brandon's approval for the architect, uh, at Sterton High School for the East Side bond proposal. I'd make that motion.
Okay, well, we got a motion and a second. Do we have any cards for this item?
Uh, no cards, Mr. Hicks.
Okay. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number seven, financial report for May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Ms. Regina Micas? I approve.
Mr. Geis jumped way ahead there. This is a financial report for the period ending May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. As you're aware, our year ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. So we, this is one month off of our year end. The general fund is ending this period at one hundred, I'm sorry, rounding, ninety-nine point nine-three percent of our budgeted fund balance, which is forty million, one thirty-nine, oh sixty-nine. That is fifteen percent of our expenditures for the year, which is right where we want to be as far as, um, having that fund balance, that cushion to, um, allow us time to make decisions and, uh, financially not be reactive. I know I've talked to y'all about that, um, quite a bit, the importance of that fund balance there. And it's right where we need it to be, right where it was budgeted to be. District one M and O, um, we're ending the May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two peri- period with twenty-six point four million dollars in fund balance. Uh, you can see the sales tax funds, the nineteen sixty-eight and the nineteen ninety-five, uh, and the West Washita sales tax. Sales tax trend, you know, for years, we kind of see an arc. We would start off the beginning of the year and then we would, we would kind of see an arc where it came back. Right now, it's more like, um, topograph, I guess. It, it's just all over the place. It's up, it's down, it's even, it's low, it's, so from month to month, this month, sales tax collections are down a little bit from what they were this time last year. Last month, they were up. The month before that, they were down, so, we're just continue to be conservative as far as our projections with sales tax, uh, as we, uh, approach the next budget period. I will bring your attention to, uh, page three, the last column, two thousand nineteen storm damage construction. You'll see that does have a negative balance. That is the rebuild of Boli from insurance funds, and as was, um, projected in the beginning of construction, that insurance would only cover a portion of the rebuild of Boli. And we continue to collect those costs in one fund. We don't want to start splitting it out and having, partial cost in one fund and partial cost in another. So we'll continue to collect those costs in the two thousand nineteen storm damage construction fund. Then we will close it out into the West Side sales tax fund. And the last page, um, the last two pages gives the three-year average or the three-year history with the revenues, expenditures for the general fund and, um, school district number one M and O sales tax fund. Just to give you a little more information on those funds and the history that we've seen over the last three years. That's all, Mr. Hicks.
Right. We have a motion and a second to accept the financial report for May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two?
I so move.
Second. A motion and a second. Any cards for this item, Mr. Manley?
Uh, no, Mr. Hicks, no comment cards on this item.
Okay. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number eight, consider the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three state MFP and local pay raise implementation plan. Mr. Todd Geis?
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Board, uh, I'm gonna open this up and then turn this over to Ms. Micas for her presentation. Uh, just wanted to kind of give you a report from the Finance Committee. Finance Committee vote in special meeting last Thursday here in the boardroom to consider an employee pay raise, um, to be handed out for the coming school year, and the committee voted unanimously to, uh, support that and recommend that to the board. So it does come as a recommendation from the Finance Committee, to you, and, uh, Ms. Micas is gonna come now and get into the details of, of that raise and where the monies are coming from.
You have in your packet an implementation plan for the two thousand twenty-two state and local pay raise. This simply gives the, um, all of the details of the raise and how it will be allocated. The state portion, which was passed by the legislature, is fifteen hundred dollars. The support that's for certified, the state portion for support is seven hundred and fifty dollars. What we proposed to the Finance Committee and what the Finance Committee approved is adding five hundred dollars to each of those amounts, representing a local portion. The intent of the, you know, we, we've looked at several options. We looked at, um, a percentage increase. We looked at, uh, the traditional and what you see the state did, doing a higher amount for certified and a lesser amount for support. And we looked at this and looked at the cost of each item. And this allows a higher percentage to be given to the lower income employees, which helps bring them up quicker, to really put the money where we've heard you tell us. You know, we need to address the issues of our lower income employees. So percentage-wise, this five hundred dollars, uh, local portion that goes to certified and to support, does just that. It, it gives a higher percentage to lower income employees. But in your, in your implementation guide, you'll see that for the certificated staff, fifteen hundred dollars state, five hundred dollar local. This simply, um, specifies how it will be allocated out, who will be included, and how it will affect the base administrator salary scale, which is the two hundred and forty day. Uh, and that it is in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute seventeen, four eighteen, that any teacher or administrator who is rated ineffective for the state performance evaluation would not receive the raise for any given year. That's a state law. We've complied with that. It became law. And I can tell you, since I've been in Washita Parish, we've not had an ineffective teacher. But in the case that we did, um, they would not receive the raise in the year that they're ineffective. But when they became effective, they would subsequently receive that. It's not withheld forever. Support staff, twelve hundred and fifty, that's seven hundred and fifty dollars on the state side, five hundred dollars on the local side. It's equally for all steps, and it, um, specifies how it's to be prorated for part-time employees that are less than, um, eight hours a day, which would be four, four and a half, five, five and a half, six, and seven-hour workers. You can see we have quite a few schedules there. So are there any questions? I know you all received this and have had a chance to look over it.
Ms. Micas, what's the effective date of this raise, board approval, with board approval?
The effective date is July one. Now, that will not affect accrued wages. Say, uh, an employee who's less than twelve months. Their pay goes from September through August of the next year. So, say for a nine-month teacher, they will see this change in their September check when their new year starts for payroll. For a twelve-month person, their new year starts payroll in July.
So a support person? A support person would be September check?
Right, a support person who's, who's nine or ten months would be a September check is when they will see the change.
First check, September.
What is the cost to the system on the local addition?
Cost to the system on the local addition, um, salaries and benefits is one and a half million. We're looking at that and through attrition, uh, through lining up with our staffing policy, which, um, was put in place many years ago, and, and we take steps every year to become more and more compliant with that, um, not to have a rift. You know, we didn't, when we adopted the staffing policies years ago, we didn't just say, okay, we're gonna hit it tomorrow. So as we make steps to comply with that, that frees up money to be able to pay the people we have more, which is the ultimate goal, to be able to take care of the employees we have better by only having the positions that, that's needed.
Where does these funds come from?
General fund.
I think it's important to say too, that this raise is something that has been in the works for quite a while. I know myself, Dr. Coker, and Mr. Geis, and Ms. May, and I have all discussed about the need for employee raises. And this is something that have been worked on for at least six months, maybe longer. And I know there were some concerns with the lost students, you know, our total student population is going downward. And what, was that twelve hundred and fifty students we've lost, Ms. Micas?
Over what period of time?
You tell me.
Over?
The number that was thrown out into Finance Committee was twelve hundred and fifty. Was it the last? Five years? Okay. And then through attrition, we've lost a hundred and fifty employees or teachers or?
The last three years alone, about a hundred and two.
Hundred?
Not laid anybody off or ripped.
Okay. So with our, so with our reduction in students numbers, naturally, MFP funded from the state has been reduced. And we've been managing that real good with you and Todd working as far as attrition on our employees to get us to the point that we can offer a raise to our employees, and I think that's a tribute to Dr. Coker and his staff and looking at our expenses and monitoring that going forward to be able to come up with a raise for all our employees, and well-deserving. I mean, I think that each board member here is gonna agree, from my perspective, that, you know, all our employees are deserving of a raise. Just a matter of how much raise can the school board afford, since it is a permanent raise. Now, I would like to point out too, that, that as a member of the Finance Committee, I've talked to Dr. Coker, and I know he's been working on some ESER fund money, and I let him talk about that. Uh, and I think what he's gonna recommend is something that all our employees are gonna greatly benefit from once we get the final approval on that. Now, I think we're looking at around two thousand dollars a one-time.
Right, it would be another one-time, uh, ESER, and it would be for retention, recruitment, and just the fact that, because I know that, that Mr. Geis has had, as well as our principals, have had a time finding teachers to, to teach. I mean, there, it is a shortage, and so not just teachers, but support employees also, and so, once we get, there is nothing official, Greg puts me on the spot, second time you've done this, Greg, but it is our hopes, and I feel very confident that, uh, I keep asking and bothering, uh, Clint, saying, Clint, have I got that, that, that yes, that okay yet, uh, from the state? But, uh, once we get that, we are hopeful that we'll be able to give all of our employees, as we did this past year, the fifteen hundred, uh, two thousand dollars across the board, and that would be for support and for certified, is what we're.
What's the date? October?
We are hoping,
Don't know.
We are hoping that we can get it out before we go into fall break. You see the pressure, Clint? I get put on me. That's why I put it on you.
I just wanted the employees to know there was a possibility of additional funding.
I think there's a great possibility that we're gonna be.
And you know, you look at, say, two thousand dollars per employee on ESER funds with a teacher and two thousand dollar raise, fifteen from the state and five hundred from the board, you're looking at a four thousand dollar raise for this year. Well, I'm not saying a salary raise, but total money in their disposal to use.
That is correct.
With the economy that we're facing, which is needed money. You know, and the same thing with the support people, you know, two thousand dollars on, uh, twelve hundred and fifty, fifty bucks is be, you know, thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars. That's substantial money. I say substantial, it's better than what could be offered without it.
Right, and I shared with our support people at the, uh, Finance Committee meeting, because we had several here that can't pay you what you're worth, because they're worth so much more than what, what we're able to, uh, to financially support and to pay them, but I hope this is the first step down the road of being able to try to help, uh, especially not to put our certified staff behind any means, by no, you know, by no means, but to help our support staff.
I don't think in today's times, there's ever gonna be enough.
Yeah, it won't.
Do we have a motion and a second to, uh, accept this twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three state MFP and local pay raise?
I so move that we accept this state MFP and local pay raise.
Second. Motion and second. We had done, had all the discussion we probably need, but there isn't any more discussion. Yes, we have several cards. Uh, Ms. Roxy Johnson, would you like to come forward, address the board?
Okay, I'm gonna speak on the behalf of the support staff. Uh, some of them are here, some of them aren't, aren't here. A lot turned out last week though, which was very exciting. I just want to remind you all that they are very thankful for this small raise that y'all are giving them. However, with the state and the local, um, which is twelve fifty for the support staff, we want to remind y'all that is only a hundred and four dollars a month. Right around their time that the insurance benefits, everything is increasing, so this raise is out there like twenty, thirty bucks maybe that they will actually notice. Therefore, it's clear that what Reginald suggested, for y'all to go back to the drawing board and see what else that y'all can do, uh, we all, me and the support staff, um, we supported that. We think that y'all can do a little better than five hundred dollars a month for teachers and support staff. However, I wanted to go ahead and point out that your support staff are the heartbeats of a school function. It takes everybody in order for your school to function properly, but once your heartbeat is gone, your school is dead. And they have had enough. They are overworked, underpaid, unappreciated. And so I encourage you all to go back, look at the funds, and see what else that y'all can do in order to increase that five hundred. And so, I encourage you all to go back, look at the funds, and see what else that y'all can do in order to increase that five hundred to at least seven hundred. And just go from there, because it's five hundred right here. When their insurance increase, that's nothing.
Ma'am, they're not unappreciated, I can promise you that. They might be underpaid, but they're not unappreciated.
They feel that way. I promise you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Johnson. Tiffany Hatton.
During our Finance Committee meeting, the special meeting that we had last week, it was brought up by a support staff member of bringing back before the board our supplemental sales tax that our community voted on back in nineteen sixty-eight as well as nineteen ninety-five to try to bring it back to the community from the original intent of us voters to have it specifically for our certified teachers in the classroom, as well as our support staff personnel. And it excluded originally in nineteen sixty-eight, it excluded central office staff. So, I would like to ask the board if you would consider bringing that back up for a voter choice this November, because that supplemental sales tax overages back in the sixties and the nineties, or, yeah, the ninety-five. It was originally to offer our educators and support staff kind of a guaranteed increase in pay through that thirteenth and fourteenth check. And we haven't been seeing that, that increase, because it is being spread throughout central office and all of these other deemed professional or certified employees. So, I think our, our, our public is given the opportunity to be able to have a say of where our tax dollars are, who they're going to. And I'd like to say and reiterate, originally, it excluded central office staff, secretaries, and, and people of those designations, because the people wanted the educators and the support staff to be getting those supplemental sales tax monies, not all the added-in secretaries, coordinators, directors, administration, that weren't directly connected inside the classroom. So, I, I would like to hear the board discuss this, because this is something that stakeholders and us taxpayers really wanna see for our educators to be able to offer added funds, as well as, I mentioned in the Finance meeting, that since we do have a shortage and teachers are having to cover classes and bus routes are having to be shared, can we do stipends or have that money go toward those, those support staff and educators that are having to fill in the gaps? That would, that would ease those burdens as well.
Dr. Coker, you like to comment on?
Well, Ms. Mekus, I know that you're, you're hearing what Ms. Hatton's having to say. Can you address some of it?
About the sales tax intent and the way the money distributed?
I can guarantee that we follow the resolution as it was adopted by the voters and passed in nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen ninety-five, and that anyone that was not included in that resolution does not share in that distribution. There are funds designated through the general fund for employees who were not included in those original distributions that are, that their supplement is paid for out of their source of pay, not the sales tax.
Yeah. Can we see those original documents of where Johnson had stated in sixty-eight or ninety-five where, because I have a document that shows the voter display, and it, and it excluded, and it listed the exclusions. Can, can the public see those? Because it came back up for a vote in ninety-five, and then it changed it to all employees or to employees, and it didn't specify.
The nineteen ninety-five resolution has nothing to do with the nineteen sixty-eight resolution. And, and from some communication that we've had, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. Each district, each school district across the state has their own resolution. Ours looks different than Monroe City, looks different than Richland, looks different than Union, looks different than, I mean, you get it. Everybody's resolution is written a little bit differently. We follow the resolution that was passed in Washita Parish. Also, our collections are not pooled with the other districts. We have tax collections that are specific to our district based on address of where a business is, is paying sales tax or collecting sales tax. As far as those original documents, I can, we can get those.
I'd like to see them. I know our community would like to see them, too.
I don't think that's ever not been public record. I think they're all on file with the clerk of court, actually.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
And they would be at the, the, any, any elected, anything that's passed by election would be at the clerk of court or the secretary of state, right?
Well, Elmer will be able to get a copy of it.
Yeah, it's totally correct. We've got a copy.
So it's the sixty-eight sales tax, which is the thirteenth check, am I right?
Yes.
So it's figured as the resolution was passed on the tax in nineteen sixty-eight?
Yes.
You know, I think legally, the school board is bound, based on my experience. When a resolution goes before the voter and is passed, that resolution specifically could become law, and we're legally bound to that resolution. And I know where Elmer has talked to me in the past. We can't deviate from that one bit.
What she's saying is, could you take and put it back on the ballot? And from some input that I'm getting from support staff, is that they would like to put it back on the ballot and where everyone got an equal share.
And, and let me say, that did come up in the Finance meeting, and I've not had time to check out the legalities of, because if you put it back on the ballot, does that mean you are striking it down and you will no longer collect that anymore? Which goes into individuals' regular paychecks also. I don't think we would have any employee that if they thought that it went back out there to be voted on again and it not passed, that they're gonna take several thousand-dollar cut in pay. So we need to get the, the, the right information before we take that kind of measure. I think what they were asking is for the, especially for the sixty-eight, and the way it passed was eighty-eight percent went to certified and twelve percent went to support, I believe is what it, it was. And they would like to see the distribution different. And, and in doing that, you keep in mind, you have the eighty-eight percent that's going to the certified staff, and I, I don't know where they would go with that. I don't know. I just don't know. But I think that we need to make sure that if we do something like that, that we don't disregard the sixty-eight tax and it's no longer there whatsoever. Because if it is, it's gonna be a whole lot of unhappy folks in Washita Parish.
I think that's a possibility.
And that's what we need to...
You put it before the voters.
Ms. Johnson, comment about how support people thought they were underappreciated. So now we're being asked to underappreciate district coordinators and secretaries and those. If you would change that. You're asking teachers to take a pay cut in order to pay support people more. Teaching who, for Lincoln Parish, or Monroe City, or Jackson Parish, would suddenly increase, because we would lose.
And I agree. I think it's more complicated than you think. It's not as simple as, let's just go back and redo it. I think that, that, that a lot of thought needs to go into that. And, and Mr. Como, you, you are exactly correct that you are gonna be asking your certified people and others to take a pay cut, so that the non-certified people can... I think that maybe there may be a different way to address that, as opposed to going to, through all of that. But again, you know, I, I don't think that we're gonna solve that one today. But, you know, it's always worth letting those people who we pay to look at it, come back with some suggestions or recommendations.
I know, but that would, I would imagine would happen if it passed. I, I understand what you're saying. Right. Right. To talk to comment, one other thing to follow. We've had this question come up in several contexts that Ms. Mekus mentioned about those central office positions. The board collectively decided, I think back in two thousand four, two thousand five, or maybe, if I'm wrong, it was the committee, decided that there were certain central office positions, and there were a few of those that were designated in the resolution, that were worthy of consideration of additional funds. Those monies did not come from the sales tax. Those funds basically come out of the, the general fund, correct?
Correct. The only people included in the sales tax distribution are those addressed by the resolution approved by the voters.
And there's been some confusion about that or misunderstanding about that in the past, with those positions with the board. There was a special committee that had about eighteen or twenty people on it, and the board approved consideration for various central office positions. If those raises came from general funds, if they did not come,
They only get a...
Those folks that share it themselves.
They only get an amount equal to, they do not share in the collections.
And I think there's been...
They're not included in the calculation of how to distribute. They don't receive funds out of those monies. They just receive a share equal to the ones who are included in the distribution, as outlined by the voters.
Regina, that, that thirteenth and fourteenth check, that payroll for that check, is it, it is audited by someone with a statement, make sure that that is paid in the correct manner? Who is that audited by?
We have, we have financial auditors hired by the board, Alan Green and Williamson. They, you would be surprised at, at what they look at. An audit is, the purpose of an audit is to ensure that we are correctly reporting our financial data. And when they come in, they look at payroll. I can guarantee you, they're gonna pull my salary, Dr. Coker's salary, they're gonna pull other directors and look at their salaries and how they're calculated. They're gonna look at how we calculate our regular employees' salaries. They're gonna pull invoices and make sure that we're paying them correctly and not paying for anything we shouldn't pay for. They look at every financial function of the board.
They also look at sales tax resolutions that were passed, correct?
Yes.
They make sure we interpret them and pay them accordingly.
Probably, I can't even remember how many years ago it was. Say, two thousand fifteen, they did come in, and I know our auditors pulled sales tax resolutions in every district that they audit and specifically checked the calculations. And those calculations have not changed here.
Isn't a portion of this paid out monthly?
Yes.
All the bowling respects and what? It's not just the third day, the fourth day?
Correct. The employees who are addressed in the resolution receive a monthly amount. The thirteenth check and the fourteenth check is considered a clean-out check from the balance of taxes collected. So, there's a monthly amount paid out to those employees. And then at the end of the period, there's a calculation done to divide everything that's left in that, of those collections that weren't paid out monthly. And that's where the thirteenth check originates.
Well, we have got a motion in a second on item number...
We got one more comment card, Mr. Hicks.
Well, I'm gonna ask you about another comment, right? I hadn't, I hadn't got through with item number eight. We're not going to number nine.
No, this is on eight.
You got another comment on eight?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Well, that took some long. I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, number eight, agenda item, Mr. Byron McCoy. He's gone. Okay, we have no more comments.
Okay, thank you. Since we got a motion in a second on number eight, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving down to item number nine, construction renovation projects report, Mr. Stephen Hemphill and Dr. Coker.
Stephen, let me make a comment. Come on, you can come on up. I just wanna take a, a few minutes to acknowledge a longtime board member and supervisor of construction and nurses, Mr. Kenneth Slusher, who passed away this past Saturday, July the ninth. You notice that we have his nameplate still up and his chair is vacant. Ken was a part of Washita Parish School System family as he served as a board member from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-three, and was actually president of the school board from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-three. In nineteen ninety-seven, Mr. Slusher was appointed coordinator of construction and safety, and he held that position through this past Saturday. Ken's dedication and service to our district will always be remembered, and certainly our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife Rita and their family. In addition to Ken, I do wanna mention and say that Reverend Harold McCoy, our board member, had the passing of his mother a week and a half ago, and I think they laid her to rest this past weekend. So we have been praying for you, Reverend McCoy, and your family. And we also had another tragedy in our family, school family, and that being Mr. Terry Cox, who is our, one of our custodians here at the central office. His grandson, I think twenty-two or twenty-three years old, was tragically shot. I think it was an accident, whatever, I'm not sure. And he died. So we've had, we've had three major deaths within our Washita Parish School System family within the past week and a half. And so, I have asked Stephen to kind of step in. Stephen has been helping out with our construction and helping Ken through the past several months. And so, I've asked him to, to kind of take the lead on our construction for this, for this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Coker, Gary Hickman, board. In your package, you got two tabs, one for TBA, give you some updates on the construction projects we have. First one, Beboli Elementary, Punch List line are still being completed. A portion of asphalt parking is being poured, benching works complete. They're testing the HVAC balance system is underway. And then the fire alarm is expected to be installed starting today. And the fire marshal file inspection should be set for seven twenty-two of two thousand twenty-two.
They are starting the fire system today. They are putting it up as we are speaking, which is a huge blessing for us.
At Washita, you'll see that the blockwork, Ag Arts building is nearly completion. The temporary roof is expected to be installed soon on the welding shop. Simple saver insulation is being installed. Work in the councilor's office area is near completion. And then the final block work is being expected to be completed soon in the admin addition. We have restrooms at Riser, Riser Elementary that's being renovated. Demo work's complete. Plumbing, roofing is near completion, and they, they're starting some of the tile work in those bathrooms.
Just one question on that one, Stephen. With schools starting in about five weeks, what is their projection on restrooms there, or do we need to?
They said they would be through before school started back, and I see some dates here that I seen earth that that show that, I mean, that, that's a bad date there on that.
Let's watch that one really close.
Yeah, they're, they should, and they said during a last construction meeting that we would be completed before school started next year.
Did you have a chance to look at that area that I told you about, Tim?
That Beboli, I haven't not had, I haven't had a chance. I will get with you and look at that.
Yeah, I talked with Ms. Bates, matter of fact, today on that very thing, and if we can do something to add that additional space for playground, that would be great. And it makes me seeing what it would take on our part, our part to put that fence in, where, Tim, will y'all let us do what we need to do without having to, to go back through you? Okay.
We got some roofing projects going on there in the, the design phase now, so soon they'll be ready, they're bid out very soon. Last Thursday, we had a meeting start in middle school. They're starting to pour concrete. They just need good weather. And they kind of showed us a diagram of A, B, and C, which are starting, I guess, to the west. They're moving to the east with, with the pouring of the concrete. So, I think they were gonna start doing some parking lot work, trying to stage some... trying to stage some, the metal work to come in and start putting up framing on that west side, so.
Are they pretty well on schedule?
Far as I know, they, they, they're on schedule. Now, that day that we left, they were talking about rain. I got to my shop, and I think it might have raised 30 inches an hour over here in West Monroe, so.
We didn't get it out there.
Yeah, didn't get it out there.
That's good to hear they're on schedule. They have, they told us, we asked that, and they said yes. Good, good.
In fact, they said they had a schedule on the plumbing on the kitchen.
Architect Alliance, biggest thing we have with them are, are completed. I got Washita High School still being designed on some of the phases on that. And then the storm damage that we had during the snow, we're still working on some of that stuff that's pertaining to most of the schools on the west side. I know we're doing some awnings at West Ridge that they, they've poured the, got the drainage work in, they poured the concrete slabs. And then once they'll get that, they'll start putting steel up and, and finishing all the gutter work. I don't, I saw the information I have from the architects. I don't know about Richwood High on what we have for land free for the multipurpose. I didn't get any information from them, so I don't know where we're at.
Well, and I've spoken with Reverend McCoy and, and Dr. Locke also, and I am hopeful that between now and the next board meeting, we will be able to finalize plans and in August, put that out for bid, is what I'm hoping.
Well, again, I went by Land's office yesterday morning, because Dr. Coker and I, and even the principal, Dr. Locke, were concerned about having not heard anything recently. And I was told by Cedric Hemphill, not, not Bill Land, that we should have something by next week. So Stephen, it would be great if you would just contact him and just let him give you that, maybe in a text or email or something.
And we're actually, we're actually looking for final drawings, because we have seen preliminaries two or three times.
Yes.
So we're looking for final drawings on this.
That's all I have, any questions?
I went out to Washita, looked at the roof finish out there. I couldn't see anything I liked on it.
They were working on, getting the caulked and done for the warranty issue. Roofing company, or you know, that supplied the material, they come and found a few areas that they wanted caulked before they did their issue on their warranty stuff. They're working on that.
Stephen, I also asked, checked with Dr. Coker, and asked if I could just meet with Mrs. Brown, now that she's the principal there, sort of to bring her up to speed. And then I, I did ask if.
At Richwood Middle?
Yeah, if Mr. Fremont, if you would, because he helped to start it. You know, he could meet with us if you would be kind enough to do the same. And let's sort of bring her up to speed so she'll know, because I don't know if she was included when we were meeting, but.
I think she was with, with Mr. Fremont. He said that she had, he was keeping her informed on what was going on, on all that, which is good.
Dr. Coker, I'd like to make a comment on our architect going forward. I know from time to time, the board has a question. I know Dr. Coker and I have talked about several projects in my area, whether we need an architect involved or not, right? I'm not a professional, Dr. Coker's not a professional. You know, we, we have to lean on somebody that knows something about construction to make that call. Naturally, you know, I have all the respect in the world for architects, and we need architects in the business that we're in for building schools, renovating schools. But at the same time, you know, if we don't need an architect, I wouldn't want to spend taxpayer money on a unnecessary need for an architect, and I'd just throw that out to the board. I think we're all on the same page on that. So, you know, I've asked Dr. Coker, and I, I think I've talked to Stephen too in the past. I'd like to kind of rely on Stephen's expertise in the construction area to really make a determination from a board's perspective, whether we need an architect. You know, like an awning or a fence or a part of a roof replaced, you know, something in that category that we not incur additional expense with an architect when it's not needed. That's my sentiment on it. I mean, I, I feel like the board feels the same way.
Absolutely.
Any more questions for Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving right down to valuation of bids. You got a card on that, Rick?
No card, no more cards, period, Mr. Hicks on the agenda.
Okay, item number one, we're gonna be a number, Chromebook cases, SFR funds, $500,000.
Thank you, board. Before I start, I wanted to clarify, Ms. Meeke said that I banded y'all last month, and I didn't, I was in California saving the world. So you know, it was important that I was not being able to be here last time. We do not have any new bids to bring before you. We do not have any bid tabs to bring before you today. What I'm asking for is the Chromebook case RFP will open up Thursday, day after tomorrow. In order to get them here on time, Clint and his department, as well as my department, will meet and we will open those, and we will choose the lowest responsive bidder and want to go ahead and award that and get those things on order moving this way so he can have them installed before school starts. So that's what I'm seeking from y'all today, and that is the only thing that we have.
I move with grant permission for y'all to choose the Chromebook of the lowest.
Second?
And I will bring that report to you in August.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, you got a motion in a second? All in favor, yes?
Yes, yes.
Post no? Motion carries. We have permission to bid, we have none. Board, our next meeting is August the 9th at 12 o'clock, Dr. Coker?
I don't have anything.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Second.